You ready, Timmy?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. Call this meeting order, quick call rule.
Chairman Jim Fambro.
Present.
Vice Chair Guygo.
Present.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
If everyone would please stand, I would like to ask the Deacon Jerry Quintana to come up and lead us in a spiritual beginning to our meeting. Thank you, Deacon Jerry, for being here.
Thank you for the honor. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Deacon Jerry from our Lady of Guadalupe Parish. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Merciful Father, we thank you for the many blessings you bestow on us each day. We especially thank you for this day as the county commissioners meet to discuss matters and affairs pertaining to Taos County, bless them and guide them to make wise decisions as they pertain to the constituents of this county. We know well that not all the tasks and decisions concerning these affairs are easy to make, but we ask you that you help these men and women deliberate and work together for the betterment of this county and the people who recite in it. That when all is said and done, Taos County is a better place to do business in and in which to reside. Grant this to our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Deacon.
Have a good day, have a good meeting.
Do you two remain standing? And Steve, would you lead us in pledge?
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners?
Motion to approve. All second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, discussion, hearing none, quick call rule.
Vice Chair Guygo.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Item five, citizens' concerns. Any citizen wishing to speak to the commission here with no decision being made shall limit their comments to five minutes. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the commission today? Seeing none, we thank everyone that is here for being here to join us today, and we'll move right on to our next presentation. It's under item six, discussion on roles and responsibilities, county elected officials. We're honored to have Grace Phillips of the New Mexico Association of Counties. She's the general counsel. We're honored to have you here today. Thank you very much, Grace.
Okay, great, great. Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
As you said, my name's Grace Phillips, and I work for the New Mexico Association of Counties. And I want to really thank you for inviting me to come this morning. It's been a few months since I've been to Taos, and what a gorgeous morning to be driving up here. What I'm hoping, good morning, is that this will be informal. If we can have a conversation, I think that would be great. My hope is that I can be informative for you. And so while I have some comments prepared, you know, I would just welcome you to interrupt, ask questions. Some of my comments have to do with elected officials as well as the commission. And if you ask me any hard questions, I'm just going to defer to Bob. So don't hold back with that. But in general, I know that Steve Kopelman and Sharon Stover were here not that long ago, so I know you've probably heard a lot about, you know, what the association does. And I've worked for the association for almost 10 years, and I feel fortunate almost every day that I get to work with counties and in particular with the Association of Counties because really we exist to help counties, support counties, advocate for counties, and really try to help people understand all the good work and the important things that counties do. And one of the ways that you can really further that, you as commissioners and your other elected officials, is how you comport yourself in what you do. And that can be a challenge. Some people have said that counties were designed to fail. Any idea why people would say counties are designed to fail? Oh, I thought you raised your hand, Commissioner. Okay, no. Well, the idea is because of the structure. You have a commission, you have this elected body, and you're responsible for policymaking. And then you have elected, and I'm going to keep doing this, it'd be great if you all kind of sat around with each other, but you have elected officials who are department heads, who are independent, and you interact in sort of an interesting way. As the policymaking and the budgetary body, you hold the purse strings, but what don't they hold for you elected folks? I just, I saw the sheriff on the way out. I guess he had a trial going on the other side. What you don't get to determine is what their policy is in terms of their professional operation. And sometimes there can be some tension with that. And I think the counties that work the best are the counties that cooperate, where maybe there's disagreement, there's debate, there's, you know, that kind of healthy stuff, but at the end of the day, there is, you know, collaboration and cooperation because that's almost what you have to do. You're intertwined. Counties are created by statute, and you're creatures of statute, so your authority comes from statute. You don't, it's not like the sovereign state or the federal government or whatever. You're statutory animals, or I won't call it animals, but creatures. And unless you have express power, it's not something you can do. And so they talk about municipalities and counties having the authority of municipalities and stuff, but usually what we're looking for is what's your authority in the written statute. So that can be kind of interesting because some of the statutes that govern what counties do have been around a really long time. You know, take a look at our jail statutes. Those predate statehood, and I think they really anticipated a time when, you know, the olden days kind of thing, where, you know, you had the sheriff and his wife cooked the meals or, you know, something. There weren't a whole lot of people. But what's happened, as you know, in modern New Mexico is that jails have really exploded into this huge operation. They occupy a third to a half of most county general funds, really not just a financial burden, but a moral burden, a social burden. We talk a lot about how our county detention facilities are de facto mental health hospitals. We know that's true. We know that people in our detention facilities are, in large part, folks with serious mental illness. We know our detention facilities in large part hold people who are poor. And we know that the consequence of housing people who maybe don't need to be housed is really devastating for the community and the families and so on. So it's come, it's really developed from being, you know, the Billy the Kid, dangerous, violent offender, to our friends, our family, our neighbors. And I think counties are well positioned to be leaders in terms of policy and how we're doing that, and really questioning not just how much it costs, but financially, but how much it costs our communities and what we can be doing better. And that's certainly something that we at the association spend a lot of time on. So what sort of other duties fall under your authority as commissioners? Well, and I brought some handouts. I didn't make a lot of copies because I didn't know who was going to be here, but they're not, actually, you know what? I'm going to hang on to one just so I don't have to remember this. You know, commissions are different, and how you do things are different, but certainly one of your key roles is adopting the budget. And like I said, that's a way that really affects your departments within the county, that you control the budget, but you also have a responsibility to give adequate budget to your departments, right? So it's kind of an interesting line there. You set taxes, you issue bonds, you adopt ordinances, and you're empowered to do that, to pass essentially laws, and that's what ordinances are. They're county-level laws. I think it's important to remember that there's a hierarchy in law. You know, we have the Constitution, that's sort of the big statement of principle, and under that you have the state statutes, under that maybe you have regulations. And then county and municipal ordinances are really subservient to state and federal law. And I point that out because we actually have had county commissions that have disagreed with constitutional principles or have disagreed with the Civil Rights Act of 1964 or the State Human Rights Act. And so I guess a question I have for you is, if you as a body disagree with federal or state law, can you pass an ordinance that says otherwise? Can you?
I'd say no.
No? I mean, I guess sometimes it happens, but is it enforceable? So, so no. So an example of that is we had, you know, we have a state law that called the New Mexico Human Rights Act that prohibits discrimination on a number of bases, you know, the race, religion, national origin, also sexual orientation and gender identity. Not everybody agrees with that. And so we actually have had, you know, a commission where, oh, no, we're not going to put that in our personnel policy, our personnel ordinance. Enforceable?
By not putting it?
By not putting it. We're not going to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation in this case.
Not enforceable?
Not enforceable, no. But it certainly said, I mean, what worries me is someone who works on representing counties and trying to keep them out of trouble is, okay, now this commission sent this big message saying we do discriminate or we can. And so it created a really tricky, I think, situation, so I saw HR come in the room, for the human resources folks who had to say, look, we are not, we are going to comply with state and federal law, but that creates a tension. So in your role as policymakers, it is important for you to understand and comply with existing, I'll call it higher law. And certainly your county attorney can help you with that, lots of people can, but the point is you're powerful, but it has limits, right?
What is it called? Excuse me? Crime law? Did you say crime law?
I don't think I did because I don't know what I said.
Power.
Oh, I think I said higher law.
Higher law.
Yeah. And by that I'm just talking about, you know, exists, you know, the Constitution or state statute or federal statute if it applies to counties. So you can adopt ordinances, and you can also, you have powers with respect to planning ordinances. I don't know, do you have a land use ordinance in Taos? Yeah, many counties do, but not everyone does. Who do you, who's the one employee you can control in this county? He's not here, so you're not. There's two. Oh, you as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And again, not every county's set up that way. So the county attorney and the county manager both are employed by the commission in Taos So you set the salaries, you supervise two employees, but what about the rest of the employees?
Those are his.
Those are his, yeah. How does that feel as a commissioner? Do you ever want to?
I'm comfortable with that. And I've always just taken, I mean, sometimes you have to talk to your department head, you have to have meetings with them because you need to learn about things that are affecting your constituency, but you always have to remember that you can't give them any directives. You can let them know your opinion, but only that, and it's up to them to make the final decision. And in the case of the county manager, you know, any of us can direct the county manager to do something, but if the county manager believes that that's something that needs to be brought to the whole board, then you obviously defer to that and deal with it in an open meeting. That's the way I've done it.
Yeah, I mean, you made so many important points in that statement. I mean, so including who's responsible for the employees. And the employees in Taos County, you guys have created a personnel ordinance, and the employees fall under your county manager in terms of discipline. And that's even though they may work for an elected department head, right? Which can be a little, can cause some tension there. So that's one thing that's very important, and it's a message that we try to give over and over again, Commissioner, is exactly what you said, is that the commission and individual commissioners really need to stand down when it comes to individual personnel matters. And then it becomes kind of a fine line of sharing your opinion versus giving a directive. As a body, you have authority. As individuals?
And it's not such a fine line if you make it clear, you know, this is my opinion on one commissioner out of the other.
Right, but you have to be very clear about that because how do you think, I don't know how many staff employees we have in here, but how do you think it feels to a staff employee if you go up to them and you say, you know, I think you should do X, Y, and Z?
Mr. Chairman, well, all of a sudden, they're turning into tails, they're going all over the place, and there's not one boss, but all of a sudden, there could be 10, 15. And what I want to stress also, the fact, and I like the way we operate, is that it reduces the liability on the county. It hopefully puts an end to sexual harassment and intimidation and all those things that come in with a commissioner or wanting to be involved on the day-to-day operation of a county.
Yeah, really good points. So, and liability isn't something we really talked about here, but why would there be a liability question if a commissioner gets involved in an employment, individual employment matter? Why would that create?
Well, all of a sudden, you are trying to direct that individual, and if that individual knows the responsibility and the rights, they're going to complain to the county manager. If that is, if that goes into deaf ears, then that could create a lawsuit eventually.
Especially when we're told at the very first, in our BIPo training, in our very first ed classes, that that's not our job.
Right, right.
And when we break that, we're knowingly ignoring everything we've been taught, everything that we are supposed to be standing for, and the proper hierarchy of the county. I mean, we're breaking it without any, you know, thinking that we're above it, I think is kind of where it's going. And that just sets us up right there for a really serious issue that then you have to deal with, and it comes out of our bloodshed, and it comes, I mean, it's just, it's a snowball effect.
Right. And you can be named individually, and that's typically what would happen. So it creates a situation where a commissioner is doing something that's outside his or her scope, and it often raises the question, well, why? Is this politically motivated? And then the question becomes, well, if you're going to intervene on behalf of this employee, why aren't you intervening on behalf of that employee and the other employees? On and on and on and on. And the outcome is exactly, Commissioner Fambro, what you said, is it's liability for the county, and it's also liability potentially for you as individuals. The other thing is, even though it sometimes feels like you know what the story is, inevitably you don't, right? Inevitably, you have a source, you have an employee who's telling you what they feel, and, you know, and I'm not saying that they would even necessarily be being deceptive or dishonest, but you don't know the whole thing. And so your mechanism is to do exactly what you've done, which is to have a personnel ordinance that sets out a process that says, you know, if somebody complains, for example, about workplace harassment, these are the people they need to complain to. That's really important because you want somebody who's going to do, handle it consistently and appropriately to get the information. So you've got that in your policy. And then your policy says the county has an obligation to investigate. Good. So that means find out what really happened, and then there's a process even for appealing if someone's not happy with what happened. So your role is really set up that structure and expect your manager with the advice and counsel of your attorney to carry that out. The minute you start injecting yourself into that, it creates a problem.
I think, Grace, Mr. Chairman, that one of the areas where it becomes very difficult not to get involved on the day-to-day businesses like with our road department because we are continuously getting phone calls, either complaints or comments, good comments, with regards to road issues. And so we as commissioners want to be making sure that those roads, those culverts are all fixed, and bridges are operating well. So we contact directly our foreman or our road superintendent, and that can sometimes, I know I've seen it in previous commissions where it leads to a lot of internal struggles, a lot of fighting, a lot of bickering, a lot of things that can go on.
Yeah.
So it becomes difficult when it comes to roads.
You can put your finger on something that's an issue in every single county, it's roads. And constituents, you know, they want a, they want that road fixed in front of their house, or they want, they want a speed bump put in, they want culverts put in, they want whatever they want. And that's, that is something, and is there anybody here from the, ah, road department?
No.
No? Oh, you're a citizen who wants something done on any road? Yeah. Okay, so.
It's not a county road.
It's not a county road? Okay, well, even more, even more less. Well, so here's the thing. You want your roads to be maintained efficiently, systematically, continuously. So most, you know, well-run county road departments will have a schedule, right? They'll go from here to there, da-da-da-da-da. Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
So, but what happens if, and you know, there's a system to that, right? Because you get all to, you get to all the roads, you're moving your equipment in a, and hopefully in an efficient, non-wasteful way. Well, you know, if individual commissioners start saying, oh, no, today I want you to go here, and tomorrow I want you to go there, and I've got this and that, well, what's happened? And you guys did something that I think is great. You passed an ethics ordinance or ethics rule. I got it, I was reading it. And one of the things, one of the first things that's in here is that you are, you have to recognize that your function is to serve the best interests of all people of Taos County, right? This is your pledge, this is your pledge that you guys approved and signed.
Mr. Phillips, please keep your comments to yourself. Thank you.
Okay. And again, thinking about the county as a whole, and maybe not that person on your phone right now, there is a method to this. And are the roads being functioned? Now, there's a difference between somebody identifying a hazard, and we always want hazards to be addressed, right? Some, there's a tree down, there's a, I mean, there are hazards, there's a sign down, there are things that need to be addressed more promptly. But what's the process for having those addressed in your county?
County manager.
There you go. Which is very different practically, whatever, from going to an individual employee or even the road superintendent, anything like that, because your county manager's job is to have that full county perspective. And that's important because that's what you want. You want hazards addressed, and you want things, you know, so maybe there's erosion, but you want somebody who's got the full county and who's accountable to all of you and all the constituents. Because I think it can be hard as an individual commissioner when you have individual constituents coming to you. What else might be a cause for concern if a commissioner says, I want you to do X to Y road? I want you to make this improvement or do something. What might be suggested to the public if you're taking that kind of step?
Some of our favoritism will be obvious, but historically, the way it's worked in Taos County is that commissioners get calls from their constituents, and then we tell directly the road department, and they say, oh, didn't know that, and they go out there to fix it.
Are you aware?
So it's a form of notice, and it is essentially because we have never worked under a good schedule. And we're working towards that. And, you know, even today, you know, if I get a bunch of emails, I'll write Earl, who's our head, and I'll say, I'm getting a lot of complaints on El Salto Road, but I have had a conversation with him also that, you know, you don't have to do anything just because I'm getting complaints, you got to, you know, go by your priorities and your schedule. But it's almost always worked that way in Taos County.
Yeah, so sometimes the culture change is tricky, right? Because you've got constituents who are used to something. But I think it's also an opportunity for you as commissioners to educate your constituents. Thank you for telling me. I'm going to alert our manager, you know, whatever your protocol is. But it's also, we strive to be as efficient, cost-effective, you know, in maintaining all the roads in Taos County, so I'll bring it, I'll bring it to my manager's attention. But none of this, I promise, to get someone out there because, you know, I just, I refer you to this, and also what Commissioner Blankenhorn said about favoritism or doing, you know, so then it raises this whole thing, like, you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours, I'll do you this favor. This is not the professional ethical image that you would want to present to your constituents, even by doing someone the favor, which may be like a little counterintuitive.
It's like, Mr. Chairman, today, a good example, we have a tiny sliver of road that I'm hoping that the county will adopt that's within my district, and it's taken months, but fortunately, we have a good attorney, Mr. Malone's done a wonderful job in saying, well, this isn't a road that's been inventoried, we can't maintain it, we need to adopt it if we wish to do so. On the other hand, I could have gone out to my constituents and my road foreman and said, well, I need you to pave this road or.
Just do it.
Just do it, so that I can please my constituents and bring in 25 votes when I have to run again for reelection. Luckily, we have a system at the county that, you know, that our staff, our manager, our attorney have put into place where these things have to go before the entire commission, before it actually gets done. It needs approval of everybody, and it eliminates me having to get into trouble or anything else that may come up later.
Right, right. And to do something, yes, Commissioner?
Go ahead, go ahead, finish up.
I was just going to say, and to do something that would also violate your, both your Code of Ethics and, I would say, the Governmental Conduct Act, which should also be your guiding principle, and I give you the general citations there, which is that you should never do something in exchange for something. You should never use your authority, your power, your privilege that you all have to hold the positions that you do in exchange for something that'll help you, whether it's helping you getting reelected or, you know, whatever it is. That's a principle that you should never violate, and sometimes when you're in the midst of something, it may not feel that way, but step back and think, wait a minute, you know, am I, am I doing what I said I would do? Commissioner Guygo.
Just as you said, examples and having favoritism, I think that one of the things that we should probably practice a little bit, or try to practice, is that one phone call from one constituent doesn't get that sense of urgency, but when you probably have 15 to 20 complaints from residents in that area that are worried about a road, then, you know, then you bring it to your, you know, road department's supervising position or whoever that is. But you set precedence, when you make that phone call and you immediately send your supervisor to go get it done, then, you know, before you know it, the constituent calls and says, you know what, if you just call Commissioner Guygo, see, and get it done today.
He's going to do it. Yeah, so now the call's going to be done.
Yeah, you start creating that issue, and when you can't produce, then you start looking a little bit bad on the public side. So I think that, you know, one of the things that Commissioner Blankenhorn mentioned was that when you start setting that favoritism or try to get your road department director's attention, you know, it's, it's a matter of how we do it can make it an accomplished project. I mean, we have to go out there and they have to go supervise roads. You know, if you make a mention and say, you know, there's a certain cattle guard that has problems, when you guys are out there on your sweep of checking these roads, take a look at this road, you know, you're not telling them to do anything, you're just saying, these are some key areas that may need some attention when you're making your rounds, maybe you might be able to see something like that, as opposed to saying, there's that culvert there, or there's that cattle guard that's plugged or something, and they, you know, they're eager to please the commission, but at the same point, it defeats the purpose as well.
To please the purpose of efficiently, I mean, your mission is to efficiently use your scarce resources to serve the entire county. And I guess what I would suggest to you is whether you're successful in persuading the road department or not, it still reflects poorly on you if that's how you're doing it. So as policymakers, it's appropriate for you to set the procedure. How are we going to handle this? I mean, many counties that have reached this have said, we're going to funnel through our manager, he's the person who's accountable to us, and expect, you know, and hold him accountable to see how things happen. But I do think managing. But I do think managing the expectations of your constituents is important. What you said about, "Well, then everyone's gonna call," it's like, "Oh, Commissioner Gallegos, you wanna get something done?" It's not necessarily a compliment, right? I mean, it's in terms of your bigger and broader reputation. So, and I guess I would say the same thing is true if you're talking about individual employee complaints. You know, the commissioners who get the employee complaints are the ones where employees think they can get there, you know? So it's not, it's not, it's not a compliment, if you're the person that everybody's calling to complain. It's because they think they can, they think they got you. And so, again, when you get these requests, when you get something, it's an opportunity for you to educate your constituent or the employee. "I'm gonna alert our manager." And again, there's a difference between a hazard and something that needs, you know, maintenance, right? And hazards, I think, it should be all eyes on deck for those, whether it's a citizen, or a county employee, or anybody. And one of the really challenging liability exposures counties have with roads is that there will be a remote road with, I mean, we had a situation where a big tree went down, it was removed within two hours, but in those two hours, there was a fatal accident in the county. Now, I hope that's very defensible, because I think, you know, that was a pretty quick response, but, you know, that's a hazard. If there's a stop sign that's down, that's a hazard. You know, there's certain things, but a lot of times with roads, it's really more, "I'm tired of the washboards, you know, I'm, people are speeding," whatever. And just a word about that, because I know speeding is an issue on a lot of county roads. Now, the, is it de facto, whatever, the speed limit's gone down, right? State law has changed, so now if it's unposted, it's 55 instead of 70, or something like that. But, you know, speeding's an issue for a lot of counties. Just because speeding is an issue doesn't mean that it's appropriate to put a speed bump in. And I just wanna point that out to you, because this comes up in county after county after county. You'll have a constituent want it, but whether there should be a speed bump is a more complicated question, whether somebody wants it. You know, you have public safety vehicles that need to move through, you have, whether it can be maintained properly, you have capacity, I mean, there's just stuff. Let me just tell you, there's stuff, right? So those are the sorts of, I would say, specialized requests that need to be handled properly. It should never be a commissioner saying, "Somebody wants it, so give it to them." That's not, you know, within your authority, and it's really not, I would suggest, how you wanna be making road policy. You serve as a canvas board, you appropriate funds. Let's talk a little bit about, you said you have a, I'm forgetting the word again, neighborhood ordinance, development ordinance, what's it called?
Land use.
Land use ordinance, thank you, okay. So in that, I'm sure, you occasionally have people apply for what business licenses, or the ability to operate X and Y location. So when you're hearing those applications, you are operating in what I would call a quasi-judicial function. You're acting like a decision maker, like a judge, a panel of judges that work together. And I think it's important to recognize, sort of, not just the solemnity of the issue, but also what that means in terms of how you, as individual commissioners, should be comporting yourself. If a judge is hearing a case, does the judge meet privately with the parties?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, right? That's called ex parte, shouldn't be doing that. If a judge is hearing a case, does the judge say, "You know, if you wanna send me some stuff on the side, I'll take a look at that extra stuff." Does the judge do that?
You should not.
No, no. Everything's gotta be, it's what's filed, it's what's given, this is the world that we're looking at, this is the record. Does the judge say, "You know, I'm gonna be trying," I know you've got a murder trial going on over there, the sheriff said, but, "Does the judge say, 'You know, I know you've got this trial, but in my opinion, this guy is guilty, so let's speed it up. I've already made up my mind.'" Does the judge do that?
No.
No.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, yeah. So when you guys are acting as quasi-judicial, as a quasi-judicial body, I think it's important to remember, that's a special hat that you put on. And it's, it's hard, because you have all kinds of functions, right? You have the functions where you're probably interacting with constituents a lot, but quasi-judicial is a different function. And so, so I just would caution you to be really careful.
Do you attend the meeting that's been set up by the parties that are either for or against the issues?
Separately, on the side, non-public?
No, public, public meeting that is set up by either the group that's for the issue or against the issue, I mean, you're gonna be hearing...
Just one side without the other side present? I would not. I would say to the applicants, the whoever, the constituencies, the opportunity to present your, you know, you probably have a process where they work with your staff first, I'm thinking. Usually, there's a land use department, and there's a, there's people who staff the land use department, and they've got your ordinance, and they're trying to, whatever, they typically would come and make a recommendation. We've met with the applicant, and usually that's how it works, and this is what the, you know, this is what we're recommending, here's the thing. But as a quasi-judicial body, your decision should be based on what's presented to you at the hearing or hearings, sometimes there's more than one, so that there's a record of that. And I would be very cautious to have any separate meetings with constituents. And I guess I'm really curious to hear what Bob has to say about that, because you're closer to the ground on this than I am.
Grace, the important, I think that this is a lesson that we talk about frequently, and I think all the commissioners understand this, but there's an important distinction in the law between the legislative function and the quasi-judicial function. And, for example, adopting a new land use regulation, that's legislative, and it's entirely appropriate to meet with people in that context. Deciding what affects an individual, one individual's request for a special use permit isn't the quasi-judicial. So just to be clear, it's entirely appropriate to meet with constituents in a legislative context.
Right.
Even though it involves land use.
Right, okay. Thank you for, thank you for making that clarification. I hope I wasn't misleading. Yeah, you have different hats. Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Thank you.
Sorry, your chair should be calling. I'm just down here, yeah, okay.
We've got strong ex parte language in the land use regs, it's good language, but the difficulty can come up with when you switch hats. So a neighborhood association may end up being a party to an appeal on granting of an individual license, which kicks you into quasi, but prior to the appeal, oftentimes you are approached by the neighborhood association. So I don't, you know, I sort of thought, well, you can, if there's no appeal, then you're okay until the actual appeal's filed. Bob's not so crazy about that rule necessarily. If you could reasonably assume that it will be filed, then that's when you should stop, is probably a better rule.
I mean, I think, you're still wanna, you're gonna wanna see the advantage of the guidance that you can get from your county attorney, because I think you're right. People's, just like your hats change, your constituents' hats change. You know, if there is a matter before you, you shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't be having lunch, you know, with the applicant, or, you know, that kind of thing. You really want to say, "Okay, what would," I don't wanna use Judge Judy, but what would judge, you know, fantasy judge, how, and sometimes it's just, it's a question of just explaining. "We're hearing a matter involving you, let's get together when it's all done." But I, you know, you're trying to, I mean, look at your, there's something about public trust and comporting yourself with honor and integrity, and I think that's kind of your guiding thing. Sometimes you're gonna have to explain to people. We're in a different setting now, and since I'm gonna be hearing this matter, and I don't wanna have to recuse myself, we need to not talk about it, and even if we're not planning to talk about it, maybe we don't want it to appear like we are. I mean, I think sometimes that there's a question of how it appears. So, you know, and you're lucky there's five of you, some counties only have three commissioners, so when two of them talk, boom, it's a public meeting, right? And it can, you know, you live in a fairly small community, you know, people know each other, you may like each other, you like to get together. So you guys have to be careful if there are three or more of you. And technically, if you're not talking about county business, there's nothing wrong with being together, but how does it look? So, you know, you're always kind of asking yourself, "What kind of appearance are we presenting?"
Commissioner Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for being here. When our constituents write us emails, and we know we're in a quasi-judicial capacity, what would be your recommendation of who we forward those emails to, or how you respond? Many times, I've said, "I can't talk to you, Bob," and I have forwarded it to planning, but where would you recommend, how do we deal with that?
I'm gonna ask Bob for some help on this, but this is maybe how I would do it. Perhaps responding, saying, you know, "I'm sorry, but I can't review your emails now because we have a pending..." You know, in the lawyer world, we have something called averting your eyes, where you just simply, you return it to somebody, and you say, "I'm sorry, I can't, you know, I got this mistakenly," is usually how it comes out in the lawyer world. And, but from your perspective, it might be, "I, you know, I can't consider these comments now, if you'd like to make them an open session," or whatever your process is. But I would certainly want to be open with your peers, and certainly the manager, your attorney, that it came in, you know, that this came, and this is how I handled it. I didn't read it, I did read it, I'm just, I wanna share with you that this communication came, so that it's not like you're secretly...
To be forwarded to the county manager?
Well, I guess, Bob, what are your thoughts about that? She's getting something, maybe from an applicant, she can certainly educate the applicant, maybe with a copy to...
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that when it's a situation where it's clear that there's a quasi-judicial matter pending, I think what Commissioner O'Donnell suggested that she does is entirely appropriate, send it on to planning, because it's appropriate to communicate with planning. And I think a carbon copy to the manager and county attorney would be appropriate.
And do you think also her responding, and just letting the person who's communicating with her know that she really can't?
Yeah, I think, I mean, in this internet age that we live in, and especially in a highly active community, the volume of those kinds of emails is probably fairly large.
Yeah.
And so that if people are waiting for a response from just the county manager, it's gonna take a long time. I think that it's appropriate to let people know that the commissioner can't respond.
Right.
Beyond saying, "I can't respond."
It's not saying, "I can't respond, and please, you know, these are the channels, don't go through me," yeah.
I had a similar situation just in the last month or so in my district. Neighborhood was up in arms over an issue, and they started to send me emails, and so what I did is I contacted our planning department head, and let him know that I was getting these emails, that he contacted the neighborhood president, and let him know not to be forwarding the emails to me.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's another way, but it's an opportunity to educate and just explain, because you don't wanna just not respond, right? Because now that feels rude, or whatever else. But you also want to let people know that, you know, this is our process, this is why we're gonna be hearing this, so I need to be educated in the process that we have, and make the decision based on the record that the entire body hears, that it's not just one person. You're not, you know, we talk about lobbying legislators, and this, Bob said, "Yeah, when you're a legislator, you can lobby, but not when you've got the road."
Mr. Gallegos, question? What do you feel the consequences are when the commission does not follow our own ordinances or laws that we've placed?
I mean, this is a question I'd like to ask you guys. What do you, what do you think the consequences are? Because I think there's lots, that you don't follow your own...
Couple of things that I think of is that, you know, you don't really show that you have faith in either department heads, or your land use regulations, or your zoning, or neighborhood associations, when you're contradicting what you already have written on paper. So, you know...
Not much of an endorsement.
What does that make us look like? I guess, you know, there's a certain word I can't use right now, but I think that's where we would look like if, as a commission, if we chose to divert ourselves from following what we have, you know, what we've approved. And, I mean, I don't know, I think the consequences are great, because we just start losing faith in staff, from one perspective, to, you know, to the community as a whole, you know? So I think that either we follow them, or we need to change them. I don't think that anything's set in stone, but I do believe that if we have it in order, we need to continue to follow that order. If we don't, then let's find a reason why we're not. You know, the, communities change, and, you know, some things that were established in the early 60s and 70s, as far as ordinances go, don't really follow today's era of how business is done. So you have to change those things up around once in a while, but I think that if we, you know, if there's something that's more recent, two or three years old, and we continue to divert from following those ordinances, we need to come back and look at those ordinances again. You know, but I think that's a big problem if we step away from that.
I couldn't have said it any better than that. You undermine your staff, you undermine your county, you undermine yourselves. You're right, I mean, there's no, there's no shame in updating ordinances and laws. I mean, that's what happens. Law evolves, plans change, you know, there's, I mean, that's, that's good practice. But just as you said, to just disregard them like they don't matter, well, the tone is set here for your county, how your county's regarded, whether the ordinances, resolutions, and so on that you pass are honored. I mean, you're not up here just blowing hot air, right? You're doing something. And you, you set the tone for how that's treated and respected.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Phillips, I had another question relating to planning. Let's say there is a company theoretically wanting to build a slaughterhouse. We anticipate maybe it will turn into a quasi-judicial hearing. Can we go to the planning director? It's this boundary of, can we go ask where it is, who made the application, or do we just have to completely not even talk to the planning director to get maybe just basic information? That's, I have a hard time distinguishing, you know, can I ask this question, can I not?
I think if you keep talking, you'll answer the question for yourself. I mean, certainly, when you're sitting here as a quasi-judicial body, isn't that information that you're gonna get? Where it is, who it is, isn't that part of the information that you get? So you don't wanna wait, you wanna find out sooner. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Curiosity, yes.
Okay, you're curious. What do you guys think?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, the planning department's not a party, you know, so you can talk to, you can talk to your planning department, you can ask questions and inform yourself, but then, once the hearing starts, like this came up in one of our hearings, once the hearing starts, and let's say hypothetically it's on an airport, then hypothetically, the commissioner went to another town to look at the airport and learn some things about it, that was, that kind of investigation, when you're in between, like, you're in the hearing. So we had a hearing one day, and then it went six hours, and we rescheduled to finish it up. So in between hearings, you really can't go out and do an investigative effort to learn more, because at that point, you are bound to justify the facts that are brought to you. But before all of that happens, you can go to your planning department and find out some particulars, right?
I think you can find out some stuff. What are you gonna do with it? What are you gonna do with it?
See, I personally don't think it's a good idea to get involved, even if you hear rumors of something that may be happening in the community, because immediately you are setting yourself up to have to get recused, but you're also setting up an opinion of a project, and that just does not fit for when it really truly comes before you.
So, okay, I'm gonna catch on that point. When do you make a decision about a matter that's before you? When do you make that decision?
After hearing all of the pros and cons.
After hearing the pros and cons, after hearing the evidence that's presented to you, that's when you make the decision. Does anybody disagree with that? Does anybody think you can, you can make, you know, like you're... like you're the judge down the hall? Look, I read about this in the paper, I've talked to a few people, I know he's guilty. You make the decision when you have...
It just goes back to when you change hats. So, you know, when you just start to hear about it a little bit, you might want to inform yourself well before even the permit's been applied, or let alone an appeal's been filed.
So, okay, so I'll go back to the question of, let's say you find out this information. What are you going to do with it? What are you going to do with it?
Bring it up, inform your constituents about it. Because your constituents have, have questions, and you're the representative, and you're in a better position to learn. So you try to learn everything you can. And, and of course, you know, you can't do it if there's an appeal been filed, or even if there's a permit that's been granted that you think is going to be appealed. That's way too late. You know, once you're at that place, then you really do have to step back and be more reticent, and just wait for the evidence that's brought to you. But, you know, in very early stages, sometimes you have the ability to learn something and communicate it to your constituents.
What if it's confidential?
Then you have to keep it confidential.
As, I don't have my reading glasses on, but I'm pretty sure there's something here about keeping things confidential. If you hear something, if you learn something in your special unprivileged capacities, that part of that trust is that you won't, and it's, and I think it's linked to you won't use it for your own purpose. But I would suggest that you shouldn't allow other people to use it for their own purposes as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
What I hear you saying in response to my question, that I probably shouldn't even ask, shouldn't even talk to the Planning Director at all about, even if it's, and knowing, we anticipate it will eventually come to us, but it was just that basic right to know where and when. But what I hear you saying is you're probably better to not even talk to the Planning Director pre, pre...
Pre-hearing.
Pre-hearing.
If it were me, and I guess I should put this out here, because these are all very fact-specific, and I think very personal in some ways decisions. And I think there are appropriate moments to talk to counsel, because it's going to be fact-specific and personal. So what I would say is if it were me, I would be very cautious about doing, whether it's early education or education on the side, because I think it could be very challenging for you when you're in that quasi judicial role to separate out what you, what was presented before you with what you learned elsewhere. So I will just, I'll couch it in the I. And, you know, when it comes to these issues, and particularly, you know, ethics in general, you know, it's very personal. And people have to make their decisions based on what the circumstances are and what they feel. I think what's useful about having a code yourself, and also the Governmental Conduct Act, is it gives you a moment to pause. And here's, you know, here's something that, that I think, you know, there are different tools that people can use to ask, you know, to ask themselves, okay, why am I doing this? What's my goal? What's my end game? What's my purpose? Is, am I doing this because it's in the best interest of the county? Are you, you know, are you doing it because you don't trust your land use department or the applicants to give you a thorough briefing of information? Because that's a problem. I mean, if, you know, if people are holding back information from the decision-makers, I think that would be an issue. That would be an issue for the county. But the, there's something called bell, book, and candle. Does it ring true? You know, if I do this, does it ring true? Book, does it, is it compliant with our policies, our ordinances, the law? And candle, how would it look if the light of day were shined on it? You know, if somebody knew, you know, is this something that I would embarrass for someone to find out? I think those are important, you know, just things you can ask yourself.
But there's an issue, Grace, if it's a controversial issue out there that's polarizing our communities and stuff that the majority of them do, to where it's a fine line to where you are a Commissioner or you're an actress.
For your, for your district, your...
Or your personal feelings.
Ah, okay.
And we got to be reminded how to act as a Commissioner, because that's what we're here for. But, you know, as much as we may feel one way or the other on something, it's ultimately what's best for Taos County.
Right. So personal feelings can come in. I mean, and actually, your diversity and your backgrounds and your perspective are all part of the value that you bring, right? And personal feelings, so personal feelings exist. But what happens when it's personal interest? Where is that line? So I just ask you. What do you do when it's not just how you feel, but what's in it for you?
To recuse yourself.
Okay. There's a conflict, you know, so we know it's in there, it's in the Governmental Conduct Act as well. If you have a personal interest in the outcome, and that can be, you know, again, you know, what does that mean? Is it defined? Well, you know, if you, if your company is applying, you know, is bid for an RFP, well, that's kind of clear. But what if it's your sister's, or your, you know, whatever? So this is not always clear stuff. Often, there's a lot of gray. And it's a good time to get guidance. And it's a good time to say bell, book, and candle, and how. But, but when personal feelings transfer into personal interest, absolutely, there's an obligation to recuse. Now let me ask you this. Let's say you really do have a personal, you know, this is my son's company, and I, I want my son to be successful, and I really, really care about that, so I'm going to recuse myself. I'm not going to vote, but I think I'll just stand up and give testimony.
Shouldn't do that, you know? I would hope that you would...
Right. And yet, yet it happens. I'll just say that. You know, so, but I'm not voting? Yeah, but you're lobbying. You know, you're, okay. But, and again, some of these, like I said, they're personal decisions. And what is, what is your guiding principle going to be? How are you going to go forward? And sometimes it's useful to talk, to talk it through with somebody when you're making a decision, because it's not always obvious. In fact, I would say it's often not obvious. And when you're close to something, is when it's even less obvious. Okay. So, I don't know how much longer you want me to talk. I actually brought a bunch of horror stories, but we seem to have touched on quite a few of them in terms of ways in which counties have gotten in trouble. And I guess I would sum them up by saying it's often, and again, you guys have said this, yes, Brett?
Chairman, Ms. Phillips? You kind of touched on the RFPs. Can you give the Commission some guidance on RFPs or potential bidders to construction contracts or contracts in general?
Okay. Well, so under the procurement code, if the county's going to spend money, I mean, this is, this is, I'm not a procurement code person, so this is literally the way I interact with the code. The county's going to spend taxpayer dollars. The process for picking who's going to get paid and who's going to get the work, whether it's construction or something else, is supposed to be an open process and a fair process. The county's supposed to create requests for proposals that spells out sort of what you want, what you, what the applicant requirements are, what, you know, just sort of how they would qualify, and what sort of information you want from them. And then applicants are supposed to be able to submit sealed bids, so those are private confidential bids by a certain date. And then when they're opened and they're reviewed, that's supposed to be done in an untainted manner with whoever's designated to review them. Everyone's in the room at the same time. The idea is one applicant doesn't have inside information, right? Or some kind of alliance that they can make their application better. So it's really important, and Brett, I'm not sure this is where you're going on this, but it's so important for you as Commissioners who are going to be approving contracts and approving that process, to not do anything that would benefit one applicant over another. And again, in a fairly small community, that can be kind of tricky. But, but be wary of requests from you to find out inside information about the applicant process, what's been done. Or also be, I think, careful about it appearing that you have a preference for one applicant or another. Because the whole process is designed to be objective and merit-based. And if it, if it is or appears as though a certain applicant has the leg up, has a special relationship, then even if the process itself is appropriate, it can appear to be tainted. And you really don't want that to happen. Mike?
So if you promote that applicant previous things, when it actually comes up, you need to stay out of it.
Probably, I mean, that sounds like a fact-specific question, but yeah, if you're already aligned with an applicant, then to me, that would be an appropriate time to not participate in the vote on the award, or certainly not to serve on the committee that's reviewing the bids. Yeah, it's tricky. I mean, whatever it's, the money the county spends belongs to the taxpayers, right? There's a public trust that you all hold. And not just you, but every county employee, every other elected official, you know, everybody who works in the world of county government has some trust that they'll do what they're supposed to do, and they'll handle it properly, and it's not going to be kind of an inside job thing. You know, it wasn't that many years ago when the handouts that I would hand around the rest of the state came from the local paper cartoons, by local I mean, about how to get a job in Taos County, or how did this, or how did that? And what did they all sort of reflect? And I can say this, because it was prior, it was different commissioners, right? But you guys saw, you know, it was like, it's not what you know, it's who you know. It's not, so, so the county has made tremendous strides, I would say, just as an outside observer, in terms of its reputation, in remarkably short order. And I think that is something that you can all be proud of, and that you can all further and sustain and continue by honoring the process, right? Sometimes you go, "Why is it so complicated?" Oh, yeah. There's, there's sort of a reason for it. It's so that people have a fair shake. And at the end of the day, I think that's what you want for your community, is that it's merit, whether you're getting a job, whether you're getting a contract, whether you're getting, you know, a license, that it's going to be...
Always do their job.
It's merit-based, absolutely.
And that's why we have relatives that don't speak to me.
Right. I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I, and I understand that, but I think it's an educational process. And then when people realize, you know, it's out of respect, in a way, right? I respect you. You know, I've had people call and say, "Oh, so-and-so this and that." And it's like, you know what? If they're that good, I'm sure they'll get the job, right? Or if they're that good, it's going to work out. They don't need, you know, this behind-the-scenes effort on your part. So, in terms of staying out of trouble, something that often comes up is handling of money. And not always how you handle money as a body, but how you handle money individually. We've had some embarrassing headlines from county officials, not just Commissioners, but other elected officials, who have traveled on the public dime and spent money in ways that I think didn't reflect well on them. So it's something to remember. When we talk about to our boards about travel for the Association of Counties, you know, I try to encourage them to think of it as this is how you would spend your own money. And of course, as elected officials, you know that your spending is get scrutinized, or they could get scrutinized, and that's part of your responsibility. And again, there's a range of that, but unfortunately, we've had some, some elected officials do things that were, I think, embarrassing for them personally and county government in general. Certainly complying with the Per diem and mileage act is what elected officials and county employees are expected to do. Anti-donation clause, I'm sure comes up sometimes. I'm sure you've had opportunities to discuss with your attorney. It's all, that's important to be careful about. Any of the issues that we talked about could be turned into a special favor using county resources for somebody, you know, when do you cross the line of donating or giving somebody county resources in violation of that clause of the Constitution? And that's typically if it looks like one person or a small entity is benefiting from something special. I think all county elected officials want to help. They want to do good, they want to help, they don't, nobody likes to disappoint, right? But sometimes that's the challenge that you face, is maybe I disappoint the one request, but I, you know, explain why, and I have this broader purpose. And at the end of the day, if, if you have an efficient and effective way of deploying your resources, more people are going to benefit than if you're, if you're trying to respond to individuals and do their bidding. You know, we had a situation with a county that had wanted to help out a local church and decided to pave their, it wasn't that long ago. Big embarrassment, big problem, criminal convictions associated with that. So it's not just a question of no harm, no foul. It's, there are, there can be very serious consequences. Just want to make sure I'm pushing on. We've already talked, I think you understand very well, conflict of interest, and what your guides are. I think the, what I, the Governmental Conduct's pretty long, but what I tried to do at the bottom of your handout was just sort of do the highlights that I think you all already know, which is you would never want to use your power or your resources to advance a personal benefit, yours or somebody else's. It's always to advance the public interest, and in particular, the interest of the county of Taos and the people of Taos. Conducting yourself in a manner that justifies public trust and maintains integrity and ethics. I would say because of the positions you have, or the position you share, that you probably are held to a higher standard. And that's okay, because what you're trying to do is set an example to be, be the best, to be the leader, be the theme that's going to be carried throughout your county. What you do really matters. And even if it's not illegal, because people always say that, "Well, is it legal?" They want to know from the lawyer, but that's not illegal, is it? Well, it may not be illegal, but the question of whether it's ethical, or whether it's right, or whether it reflects well, those are, those are different questions. And they can be very personal questions. But I would just suggest to you that the, if you're asking, Bob, "Is it legal?" Then, you know, maybe there might be some other questions you want to consider. That's not always the case, but maybe there are.
I can imitate him when he gets around not answering those questions.
It's like, "I got to tell you, it's legal, but I really think it's a bad idea." Yeah, okay. I'm certainly want to accept nothing of value in exchange for an official act. And nothing of value, so it's pretty expansive. And sometimes it's, you know, if it just puts this stuff in your frame. And then not disclosing or using confidential information. I always cringe when the first words out of someone's mouth is, "You know, Grace, when we were in executive discuss, this session, they were discussing," it's like, "Well, what?" You know, I may be a lawyer, and I may be, we may be having an attorney-client, but no, that executive session is what you have with your peers on the Commission, if you have it with your council, right? So, you know, please hold your confidential information confidential. There's a reason if you are eligible for executive session, you're entitled to it, you've invoked it. Now you have a responsibility to the body. And I think that can be kind of tricky. So my sense is, I haven't said anything here you guys didn't already know. But I enjoyed talking with you, and...
And Grace, I appreciate the help that you gave us on, you know, putting some polish on our ethics and, and stuff. And that's throughout, we're, we have big copies like that, so the employees receive what we pledged to them, as well as the rest of the citizens.
Great, great. And I did notice it was for the commissioners. Do the other elected officials have any interest in having a broader statement?
It's open to them, and then we're hoping that the management team will come up with their own as well. And, you know, it's just, I can bring you here today, it's not pointing fingers, being tail-to-tail, anything like that, it's just so we know to do things right.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I welcome the opportunity to talk with you about it. And like I said, I think oftentimes, just hearing you talk, this is, nobody had any, you know, new information, but sometimes just the dialogue is a useful reminder, because it's not, it doesn't always come at you with a bright light saying, oh, you know, it's-
It's good to talk about it because it confirms a lot of things we already know or should know. It gives us more insight as to how we need to operate as a body of county commissioners or as individual county commissioners. I was, I don't know if you have a little bit more time, Grace, but if you could expand, you know, expand a little bit more, we do have a couple of elected officials, we have our assessor and our treasurer here today, with regards to the commission not having any general supervising control or authority over other county elected officials, maybe if you could talk a little bit about that. And also, the power that we have as individual county commissioners, or versus a county commission as a whole, versus the chairman of the commission.
Okay, okay. Well, so the short answer, I'll do, go backwards, okay? So the short answer to your authority as individual commissioners is, you know, you don't have any unless the board gives you some, right? The chair has some additional powers, because as you elect him chair, he can set meetings, he can call meetings, there are things, and certainly as a commission, you could direct one among you to do something. You know, in other words, you don't have to move as a pack all the time, you can say, well, we want to do X, Y, and Z. I want Commissioner so-and-so to work on, with staff, on, prepare, you know, a code of ethics, or I want, you can direct and authorize each other to do things. But as individuals, really, you're impotent. Now, having said that, the world doesn't feel that way about you as individuals. The county, your constituents don't feel that way, county employees don't feel that way. And so you need to be careful about sharing information, and so that it doesn't look like you're directing, or you're ordering, or you're expecting. Because human nature, in most counties, if a commissioner tells an employee to do something, they're going to do it. They're not going to say, well, you're not the boss of me, because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you're just going to get together. So it's kind of a tricky thing. Well, I think one of the things that we say in our BIPo, which is our better form of public official training, is, you know, just because people laugh at your jokes, like, don't assume that you're funny, right? Because you have, you have posi, you are funny. Okay, Commissioner, yeah. You know, that there is something that, you have positions of authority, and people are going to be deferential to you, they're going to be responsive to you, they're going to want to please you. And, you know, we haven't talked that much about sexual harassment, workplace harassment, but in fact, you know, one of the trickiest things to deal with is a commissioner or an elected department head that engages in misbehavior, because, and this kind of gets to the next point, is like, what's this interaction? So, how do we handle that? Well, it's, staff's in a tough position if they're having to investigate a member of the governing body, or another elected official. So we still use that process, sometimes we get an outside investigator to come in. I will tell you, I've had many a one-on-one training with an elected official, because sometimes that's the most comfortable way to deliver the information. And in really horrible situations, where we've had a certain elected official that just couldn't get the message, as the insurance pool, we've informed him that he will not be covered for that kind of behavior. So, you know, there's stuff, but that's a very, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing, and it's why I encourage our elected officials to high, to comport themselves with the highest standard. In terms of the elected department heads, this marriage that you have with the commission has to do with, they get to, they get to tell you what your allowance is, right? And you decide how you're going to deploy that. You decide, I don't know, the sheriff's not in here, but you decide, you know, if it's the sheriff, he decides what his pursuit policy is going to be, his use-of-force policy. He decides how to deploy deputies throughout the county. You don't get to say, well, I think, you know, there should be more deputies in my district, or I, you know, that's not part of what the commission gets to say. The elected department head has, I don't want to say a kingdom, but their department, and how that's going to function, what the treasurer, what the investments are going to be made by the treasurer, what the, you know, how the assessor qualifications are going to be, how it's going to be deployed, you know, those things are within their purview. But there's some interaction, and in particular, when it comes to employees. And this can be something that's very frustrating for an elected department head, it's like, they're my employees, right? I want to be able to fire who I want and hire who I want. But-
They have to follow the personnel policy.
They have to follow the personnel policy. And why is that? I mean, just, why would, why would, like, I'm the, let's say I'm the, what am I going to be? Clerk. Why can't I do what I want to do? I'm really good. Why do I have to follow their policies? Voters like me.
To be fair.
To be fair? I'm going to be fair.
Equal opportunity.
I don't have an equal opportunity. I don't have to do all that.
Because I think rules are set for everyone, and everyone must follow it, versus having the set rules for one, and then whole separate set rules for everybody else. It should always be the same.
It should be the same.
Be consistent.
Consistent. Consistency is really important. And I think the, it's too bad the sheriff's not here, because the legacy of classified employment, you know, what we call the job protected or the career, and I came from the private sector, it's been 10 years now, but I came from the private sector. The first time I heard someone say, permanent employee, I thought, I almost fell on the floor. What's a permanent employee? Because fire everybody up. But the legacy of classified employment really came from a sheriff's case out of Cook County, Illinois, the Elrod decision, where the Supreme Court said, because in those days, every time a new sheriff, literally, there's a new sheriff in town, the newly-elected would just fire everybody and bring on his, and I say his, because in fact, for the word odds, because it's actually accurate. And now, you know, that was sort of the thing, you knew that when there was a new sheriff, and so of course, people spent a lot of time and energy trying to get their guy in, because you know, whether they were going to have their job or not. Supreme Court said, wait a minute, you know, there's a property interest here, this is not even good policy, if you're just turning people over willy-nilly, you know, it's not good for anybody. And so, the idea that you could, and specifically with respect to sheriffs, that you could protect employees from that turnover was really born. And the idea is that you, you have some more continuity in employment, that it's based on merit as opposed to political decisions. At any time, an elected official is making a decision, it can be raised, whether it's politically-
Cheerleading process, too.
Cheerleading. And I would suggest, you know, if I ever went back to counseling private employers, it's not like I would say, make, you know, import this classified system, but I certainly think the process of giving an employee notice and an opportunity to be heard before they're fired or suspended, I think that's just good business. Because sometimes you find out that you're wrong. And it's a lot less expensive, and I think better, to find out that you're wrong before you do it, as opposed to, you know, nine months later, when a jury tells you how wrong you were. So, I don't know if that addresses all that you mean, but there's authority, there's independent, I think your departmental elected officials would say, everybody in the county elected me, you only had, you know, your district, right? I've certainly heard sheriffs say that a lot. But there is an intertwining of the rights and responsibilities. Yours is principally budgetary, and the policy that you set through your personnel ordinance, and potentially other ordinances, and theirs is within the law, within the rules to operate their departments.
Just a little quick, Grace, just come a little bit on the setting salaries for county employees.
For county employees, that is an authority of the commission to do that, and-
But if we have a pay scale already based on experience-
Right. Yeah, so the commission, the commission-
That should be set up later.
Right. So the commission can, and most commissions do, create and set a pay scale, and they can vary quite a bit depending on, you know, qualifications, year, I mean, they can vary quite a bit. I don't think there's uniformity among the counties in terms of their pay scales, but those apply.
But it's not like we can do this, for example, okay, Renee, today, we've seen that you've done an awesome job, we're going to give you an extra $25,000 a year.
Well, maybe, yeah. No, so, yeah, I'm just, guess what? Okay, so what might be the problem? What might be the problem? I mean, there could be so many problems with that, but what might be the problems?
I was wondering if three Renes are for some reason. That's why I sent $25,000.
Something tells me they would take five, 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 but I don't know, you know, yeah. Three, well, eight, eight, I mean, that's not so good.
So what was the question?
So what do you think, we're all sort of imagining an extra 25. What do you, what are the problems with just saying, hey, have some more money?
Well, if there's a union problem, that's going to-
And you guys have a clear bargaining agreement, okay, so we haven't touched on that, but that-
But also, it's not fair to the rest of the employees.
Mm-hmm. But she's really good.
Even if they're all good, if all three Renes have done an awesome job.
The rest are horrible, and she's the only good one. So there's some, I mean, this isn't the private sector. Private sector runs on bonuses and things like that, this is not. But, so there's potentially anti-donation, you're just, somebody's not entitled to it, you're just giving them some money. I think that's a problem. I think there's certainly morale issues, and then there's the fair pay, it's, they called it the Fair Pay for Women Act, but it's really the Fair Pay Act, the new state law. This is if it's a gender base, so now I'm worried about that. There are lots of ways that it can be problematic. And so, having a merit-based system, a salary schedule, is really what most counties have done to keep themselves on the straight and narrow that way. And, you know, there are promotions that come with raises, and I would hope that your best and brightest employees would find opportunities for advancement that way, to move to a higher pay grade, even if that means they're moving beyond someone else, I think that's how we recognize it. But for the same job, the same level, same title and duties, I think it's important to abide by the pay scale that you've adopted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, commissioners? Mr. Hummey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you, it's been enlightening, and I also wanted to thank you on your work on SJM4. I know it did not pass, but, oh, it did pass, but we have a copy, and I have been sending that out to commissioners, and it's going to become a bible in reference in how we move forward with issues of mentally ill jails. So I just wanted to thank you, it's a very well-done report.
Thank you, thank you. Just to give you a little bit of clarification, so SJM4, in the 2015 legislative session, was a priority for the Association of Counties, and what it did was it created a task force to look at, to make, study and make recommendations about alternative services and housing for people with mental illness in our county jails. And so that was passed, it was actually, I think unanimously passed by both the House and the Senate in 2015. It was a memorial, so the governor did not need to sign it. And then the work that we did convening, really quite a large stakeholders group, task force, was over the intro last year. And so the report is the product of that work, and I'm glad to see that you're reading it and thinking about it. I think if we are going to address the crippling effect that our detention facilities are having on counties, we have to look at the problem of locking people up who have serious mental illness. We know statistically, if someone has a serious mental illness, they will be in your jail several hundred times longer than a similarly situated person, by similarly situated, I mean same crime, same gender, same age, just the difference is mental illness or no mental illness. And I'm talking serious now, I mean, you know, there's a whole spectrum of mental illness. We know that those are the people who are in detention the longest, we know that those are the people who suffer the most from detention, we know that those are the people who result in the, that are the hardest to manage, and the most challenging for staff, you know, it's hardship for everybody. And the incredibly devastating lawsuits that we've been exposed to have been with, arose from the housing of people with serious mental illness for minor offenses, for minor offenses. And so one of the recommendations, I would say like, there's what, nine, six, nine, eight? I can't, how quickly, I forgot, how many recommendations? But I would say the overarching theme is that people who have serious mental illness should be identified and prioritized for release. That identifying, prioritizing for release into the, back into the community, but with services, that if we don't figure out a way to start doing that, we will, you know, jails are just going to continue to be used, I would say improperly, and you could even say immorally.
As are emergency rooms, as are law enforcement officers in the street, as are our EMS system, as are our volunteer fire departments, it's very deep. Commissioner Black.
Thank you, Chairman. So how and when do we make that determination?
Ah, well, if you look, I should have brought copies of the report with me, but-
I want to read those eight lines.
Yeah, I know, eight, nine, whatever. The recommendation, when people are booked into the detention facility, there is a screening that happens now, the recommendation is for something more comprehensive, not performed by detention staff, but performed on booking either by, because it, by a core service agency that contracts with the county, or a third-party provider. I can tell you, in Miami, they're doing something like this, and when, their program was only for misdemeanors, and they've just recently, in the last year, to expanded it to people with felony charges, but their turnaround was 24 to 48 hours, from identification, assessment, release, into services, but release. So, I think it should happen at booking.
Well, today, we're formally adopting the stepping-
Stepping up? Oh, terrific. Oh, good.
We've already talked about it, we've agreed in principle to it, and we'll be doing it formally today. This is a meeting in itself, this one subject?
I just wanted to just comment on, what I appreciated about the report was how you identified the codes of mental illness. And what we're learning in our hospital task force meetings is that you need a qualified person to do the proper diagnosis, that we're not really doing enough if, say, we have someone who isn't qualified to look at those codes and make a diagnosis. And that's kind of a necessary part of the whole picture, of getting these people out 24 to 48 hours, so-
It's not a booking officer.
It's not a booking officer, or even someone from the county who does not have social work qualifications, or psychiatry.
And a place to send it.
Right.
We don't, and rural, that's rural. The United States is not just rural, New Mexico, that's everywhere. When we were at Nacoa, I mean, people in Illinois and Louisiana, they had the same exact issue that we do here, it's not just us. Aside from this, I know our treasurer, Susan Trujillo, wanted to ask you something real quick.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Miss Bellas, I have a question regarding the budgets for the elected officials. And when we're given a budget, we have oversight of that budget, and to what extent? How does the, how do those parameters work as far as the budgetary guidance?
I'm going to ask Bob to help me with this, because I think it depends on how the budget is allotted. So certainly, when it comes to staff and staff salaries, you know, that's part of your budget that's already taken, right? I mean, I would think of it as taken, because you have the employees, you have the money that's going to go to pay for their salary and benefits.
And that's not the issue, the operational part. I understand the classification plan, the budget, that's all, as far as salaries are concerned, it's the operation.
The operational side. So I would say over the operational side, you have more discretion, but again, it's probably going to depend on the pieces of the puzzle a little bit. There was recently a lawsuit that actually went to the Supreme Court that involved an assessor who wanted to use part of her budget to hire an outside contractor to do some work, and the commission, I mean, it was, it was an interesting intertwining of authority, the commission didn't want to approve the contract. And in that particular case, the- And in that particular case, the Supreme Court said that the assessor, it was within her authority to deploy her funds that way, to have an outside entity perform some of the functions of her office. But I think, I think it's kind of a loaded question, and I don't know, Bob, if you have some better insight on that.
Probably not. Thinking of Chairman Babbro talking, he could imitate me, but I talked about gray areas. The key legal decision on budgets and discretion seems to me, actually involved a treasurer. It's an older case, but it involved a treasurer. And the New Mexico Supreme Court in that case said that the county has control over the budget, but not if it interferes with the operation of the office, if you prevent the elected official from doing their job. Now, that's an terribly gray description, but that's what we had.
And wasn't that a case where the Commission maybe was angry at the treasurer and decided to gut the budgets?
It was a relatively extreme budgetary decision, as opposed to more modest control over the, over the operational use. But again, the bottom line is as long as the office is able to do their job, that case says that the Commission can control it.
But they, that Commission went to, I mean, that's my memory of the case, was it was an extreme example, which doesn't, doesn't always help us every day-to-day. But I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be fact-specific, and I think it's gonna depend in part on whether you need the cooperation of the Commission to accomplish what you want to accomplish. Probably the most frustrating answer of the day, I'm sorry.
Well, Grace, on behalf of the Commission and of our employees in the audience, we really appreciate you being here today. This is not the last time we're going to ask you up here to help us, because it's, this is, this is good for all of us to hear in this kind of setting, and, and thank you again for your help.
Sure. I'm, I'm so glad they did it.
Finishing polishing that up, and something we're proud of.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Chairman, I'd like to see if, if our Assistant Manager could put up that report that Ms. Phillips worked on, and just, you could just quickly look at those six recommendations.
Chairman, it took a moment, Commissioner O'Donnell, because I have to send it to the Sarah Lees.
Why don't you get that report and send it to each one of us so that we can, we can review it? Does that work? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Commissioners, before we break, we're going on to 6B. That's Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding a Request from Not Forgotten Outreach Incorporated for the Use of the Yano Camado Community Center. Peters?
Thank you for coming back.
Oh, thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. And that was extremely informative for all of the citizens of Taos County, and I appreciate that. And that anti-donation clause that we were just talking about, and I was hoping Ms. Phillips would be able to kind of intervene, since this is a federal, what is it, national, community... I just had it. I hate acronyms when I forget them. But these volunteers that are here are from federal employees, basically, is what they are. And they're coming in to donate their time to the organizations, to the town account, the town of Taos, and also the county of Taos. So it's not really one organization that's benefiting. This is a federal program that's coming in. And I was wondering if that's gonna make a difference on the anti-donation clause.
Well, I, I don't think so, because it's the organization, organizations like nonprofits participate in various federal and state programs all the time. Just participating in the federal or state program doesn't change the character of the organization that's asking for the use of county property.
Okay, so the, the organization, Not Forgotten Outreach, would be the one that is requesting this, and therefore that would be the nonprofit, and that would be the donation clause then?
Correct.
Okay. That kind of just squash everything then, sir?
When you say squash everything, I, let me just give my comments on the anti-donation aspect of this. I think that because it's a nonprofit that's requesting this use of county property, it could be a problem with anti-donation. We can address anti-donation in ways that don't serve us practically here. For example, anti-donation doesn't prevent us from letting a nonprofit use property as long as we receive fair market value. That can either be in cash or in services. The problem that we have here is that if the Department of Finance and Administration has issued an opinion back in 2007 that if we accept in-kind services for the use of real property, for a lease or month-to-month rental, that sort of thing, that we have to comply with the procurement code. We can't just go out and award the, that use to a single organization. We've established a policy to address that very situation, where we've put the use of county property out to a RFP process. So there's three things that we have to do to comply with different requirements of the law. One is we have to avoid anti-donation. We can't just give away county property. Two is when we use in-kind services, which you later has suggested and set out the value of those services, when we use in-kind services, we have to go through a procurement process because we're procuring those services. And finally, when there's a lease of property, we have to get DFA approval. And unfortunately, that process is a lengthy one. Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Chairman. Bob, if under the terms of our lease with the association that runs the community center, could they then make the donation?
Well, the, the problem with that concept, Commissioner Blankenhorn, is that we don't currently have a lease with Yano Camado. We, we went back in 2000, in the 2007, 2008 timeframe, we switched to management agreements. We are now going back to leases because of what DFA had more recently required, but we're just going through that process.
But if we were there, would it work?
If we were there, it probably would. I'd have to give it deeper thought, but my top-of-the-head reaction is if we were there, it would.
Well, let's get there.
We've been trying, but we can get there.
Because one of the things that we're looking at is, part of my job as being the first sponsor in the northern New Mexico area is getting other organizations to put in their applications so that these teams can continue to come back over the years. That's kind of, you know, we're the first military organization in, well, correction, we're the first one in three years, we're the, the third one in eight years that has received one of these AmeriCorps teams, and this is a priority for AmeriCorps. So I'm really pushing other military organizations, the other nonprofits in town, to pull this resource in to help out our community.
And, and Mr. Chairman, that's why I suggested our, our community center. However, looking at the timeline that you want to work within, it may become a little bit impossible to be able to, to get that accomplished. And so I think we just need to kind of open our minds as to what other areas, or what other buildings, what other efforts may be able to, may be available in order to help you. And I know that St. Francis Gym in Rancho's would be an ideal location for you. However, they don't have the shower stalls, they don't have an ideal kitchen. Maybe Arroyo Walupa Church, I'm not sure, would have that accessibility available to you. I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts as to where we could go with this.
Commissioner Blankenhorn's got ideas of some sort.
Well, there's a timeline involved, but you know, the, the services that you're providing, I think, are clearly sufficient to meet, to meet the in-kind services so that, so that it would not, it would be fair value. Problem, as Bob notes, is that you gotta go through procurement first. So I don't know what that looks like, probably six weeks or something by the time you put out a request, maybe, maybe longer.
Elsa?
Elsa would know. You would have to put out a request for a proposal to provide these type of services, give others in the community an opportunity to answer, and then assess the, the answers to the request. It may well be that this organization, the Not Forgotten organization, is the only one that, that would apply, and, and that we could enter into contract with them. So that's one possibility that would probably happen quicker than getting our leases together with the community centers. But as far as the timeframe goes, is that six weeks, or eight weeks, or?
Chairman Commission, it just all depends on the information and the data received in terms of what we request to come in the door. And also, depending on the evaluation committee, and whether more information is needed from them, or interviews. I mean, it, it could range from 45 days to six months. I, I don't know. And that doesn't include, like Mr. Malone stated, DFA approval. And we all know, once, once it gets into DFA's hands, we have to sit and wait to hear back from them at that point. And usually, they have, they, they will give us authority in terms of the contract process to make sure that we are following everything that they require as well, and also not tripping on that anti-donation.
Yeah, I forgot about the DFA requirement on the lease, so that does extend it considerably. Maybe would be quicker for us to get our lease as opposed to management agreement with the organization that runs it, and then they, they may be free to enter into an agreement with you without worrying about anti-donation subject to Bob's further thought. Those, that's like the best reason to go around.
Well, let's go in that direction. We've gotta do something instead of just saying, it's too hard to deal with DFA, it's too hard to do this, let's, let's do something. And this, the team that's currently here, they will be leaving on the 2nd of April, and I pretty much got housing down for them for this time. It would be this third team that's coming in on the 15th, 12th of April, that I'd be looking at for the housing. So that would be the timeframe. So just right at 30 days.
July 9th.
Yes, sir.
And how many members do you have in that team?
I'm waiting on the conference call from them to verify if it'll be 12, or 11, or 10.
Mr. O'Donnell? Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Cordova did have a conversation yesterday with Stomena. Part of the issue is the timeframe of the April through June that they would like to use Yano Camado is also a prime season for the community centers benefit too. So that's another thing that Leonjo identified, because we're getting into graduation season and different community events that they intern rent out the building for. So one of the thoughts Leonjo wanted you guys to, is to think of maybe other facilities within the community that might be of service that they could have on a three-month solid basis without any interruption. So we know that, maybe we should help them find a different location.
Why don't we do that, Commissioners? We, we try to come up with an alternate place. It's gonna be difficult with the, but Commissioner O'Donnell did talk about, you know, the showers are available at the Youth and Family Center. And we did seek with the Youth and Family Center, part of their issue is the tournaments that they have going on can run to midnight, 1 o'clock, and therefore are doing sleep deprivation, which is a great army technique, but it doesn't work too well for teenagers.
Mr. Chairman, did you contact the Canyon, the number I gave you for the Canyon School? Because that, they don't have showers, is my understanding, but again, that was what I suggested, go to the swimming pool. They do have a commit, a kitchen, and they have lots of school space, and it's currently owned by the school, but I understand the, the, they are letting the Canyon Mutual Domestic use the building, and they have the key to the building. So my thought was, is this something you could approach them to see if they might give you some temporary housing? Other than that, it would be going to some local hotel and seeing if they donate rooms. Other than that, I don't have any other ideas.
Mr. Chairman, the ideal is to keep the entire group together, or are you open to the idea of making, maybe breaking it in half?
Per AmeriCorps regulations, I must keep it as a team unit.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the effort to contact Arroyo Walupa Church as well as St. Francis, and see where, if they can meet us with those, with these requirements.
In the back of the old convent.
Yeah. They have plenty of room, but I'm not sure if any of it is accessible at this time.
Correct. Well, I appreciate the Commissioners taking this time, this opportunity. We're not gonna give up on it. We're gonna try to come up with some. I think he may have hit something up. If you need assistance on that, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a beautiful day. Thank you. Commissioners, let's see, we're on 7. Contracts, agreements, and MOUs. I entertain a five-minute break.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
One second.
Second.
There you go. Motion and a second, clerk Colorado.
Vice Chair Guy?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Babbro?
Yes. See you all in five.
And you can share. Can you still not hear me?
I mean, you're not catching.
Yes. I know the way you bend it all around and everything. Commissioners?
Move to, to come into session, Mr. Chairman.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, clerk Colorado.
Vice Chair McGee?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, item 7A, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Approval of Grant Agreement from the State of New Mexico Aging of Long-Term Services Department to Plan, Design, Renovate, and Equip the Chamisol Senior Center, Taos County. Mr. Trujillo, thank you for being here with us this morning.
No problem. Good day to you. It was a good presentation this morning. Wonderful presentation. I just wanna thank you guys for letting me be here today, and letting you know that we plan on renovating the Chamisol Community, I mean, Senior Center with $26,000 that we're able to acquire for, for this project. So we're gonna plan on doing a, we're gonna repair the septic tank. We plan on doing a new hood so that we can accommodate the fryer that we got, the new fryer that we got. We have a, we're gonna be putting a new dishwasher and hood in there, because they currently are washing dishes by hand, and new garbage disposal. Of course, we're gonna need some engineering and design to make sure everything fits appropriately. So this is what this funding is gonna be utilized for.
Does Commissioner O'Donnell do dishes over there too?
Yes, she's actually helped us a little bit. She's actually swept floors and, and mopped, so, so she's been there.
That's how you get money.
And I haven't, I haven't... And I haven't even had to tell her to do anything, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, I have our authority to... As long as she doesn't tell you what to do.
Oh, no, not at all.
Commissioner O'Donnell, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I still note that we approved the grant agreement from the State of New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department to Plan, Design, Renovate, and Equip the Chamisol Senior Center.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Vice Chair Gago.
No opposition to that, yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes. Mike, before you leave, we appropriated a good chunk of money for the Taos Senior Center last year in the 15 legislative session.
Yeah, we have $316,000 that we're...
Where are we at on that?
Actually, we're getting... Richard Sanchez is currently working on getting a community control out there with the CES contract to go out there and give us an estimate of what we're going to be doing in that building to fix it. We've got to have some electrical work, ADA compliance work. We need to fix a section of roof. There are certain things that need to be addressed, replacing that.
To our money, and we're just working?
Well, we're waiting for that estimate so that we can submit for a scope of work for the grant agreement to come in from the long-term services. So, once I get that, I'll submit for the grant agreement.
Is that sunset, do you remember?
Well, we have till 2018, 2018 on this one, so.
They consider that.
Oh, yeah, we're trying to get, move on it pretty quick. So, just to let you know, we should be getting our hot truck in May. So, in our expedition, they had to order a new 2017, so that probably won't get down until after June. But it's an extended cab that's going to be providing meals on wheels and transportation services, so. Other than that, we're just moving along.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say that the senior director just exaggerated my cleaning. I do play occasional pool there.
I saw you with a wash rag one day. I thought you were wiping the...
Nightfallery.
I thought you were wiping the tables or something. Maybe you're wiping the pool table. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on. Item 7B, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Recommendation Toward RFP 2016-06 Medical and Social Outreach Services for Taos County. Ms. Be Hill, thanks for being here this morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commission. For you, within your packet is the final evaluation committee report and recommendation for the RFP 2016-06 for medical and social outreach services. The staff recommendation at this point, there were four responses received, and their staff recommendation is to actually award three, so it'll be a multi-award. And the three listed are the Taos Coalition to End Homelessness, Los Cúrgas Community Services, and Community Against Finance for these services and this RFP. Stand for any questions you may have.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll set a motion to approve this recommendation. Ms. Be Hill.
Motion.
Second.
And second. Question, any reason for, during this RFP process, that any of us here on Ms. Phillips' words this morning should not be a part of this?
Certain individuals. One who was mentioned, obviously, was Mr. Blankenhorn due to he is part of the board for the mental shelter.
I was fully intending to abstain because of my relationship with one of the recipients. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Blankenhorn, I'm sorry. All right, motion and second. Clerk Colerole.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Abstain.
Chairman Faber.
Yes, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Item C, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval for Recommendations to Award RFP for Audit Services. That RFP is 2016-08. Ms. Be Hill.
Again, before you, the evaluation committee report of the nine packets received for audit services for Taos County. And a very quite lengthy evaluation. It was determined, based on scoring, that staff recommendation would like to award this RFP to Acxiom CPAs and business advisors at the RFP. At this point, stand for any questions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Thank you. Was county manager on that committee to approve?
No. No, this had several members from our finance office as well as several from the treasurers.
Thank you. A move to approve?
Motion.
Motion and a second.
One quick question.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, is this a new company?
This would be a new auditing firm coming into Taos County this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you. Clerk Colerole.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to 7D, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of an MOU between the Village of Questa, Taos County for Legislative Appropriations to the Village of Questa.
We don't have a presenter, but I can present that.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
I thought that's why Ms. Martinez was in the audience.
No, it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm sorry. I didn't, we didn't have somebody from the county as a presenter. I didn't want to usurp someone else's presentation.
Chairman Faber, Commissioners, the Village of Questa.
Sorry.
My name is Renee Martinez. I'm the Village of Questa. Ms. Trujillo does send her apologies. She is not able to attend today. She is out of training. So, she has asked me to attend. The Village of Questa is respectfully asking that Taos County and the Village of Questa have an MOU regarding two legislative appropriations. One of them is for $90,000 for the Questa watershed and river restoration. The other one is $90,000 for the Questa Youth Center improvements.
Ms. Martinez, thank you.
This is an appropriation that's been maybe three, four years. That was repurposed, so I know they've got a good plan on it.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to serve as the fiscal agents?
Yes, Commissioner. We are asking that Taos County does serve as our fiscal agent for those two legislative appropriations.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, no discussion, please.
Discussion, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Can you tell us why is that you do not have the capacity to manage this grant? These grants?
Commissioner, actually, because of the executive order from Governor Susana Martinez, we are required to get a fiscal agent for legislative appropriation money.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we've been doing this already with the town of Taos on the Middle Road. For example, the funds that we got for the Middle Road, the town of Taos is serving as fiscal agent for us, and so I believe this is the reason why Questa is now before us.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. And also, for additional clarification, Commissioner O'Donnell, former administration was under some heavy odds that we got a lot of findings, and due to the governor's executive order, the Village of Questa has since then worked on their audit findings, and we are hopefully that this year will be the last year that we'd be asking for any fiscal agents. I think our house is in order and is ready to take on this responsibility as well as for the commission's information. We would be carrying all the workload for the processes. Only thing we just need is the county commission and the manager to sign off on that. We continue to do our operations ourselves.
We would be responsible for RFPs and anything involved.
And this $90,000 is from Secretary Flynn's office, and have you been awarded this yet? Or you're anticipating you will be awarded this grant?
Commissioner O'Donnell, these are awarded grants already received in our coffers for us to be able to start working on. We need to have this MOU.
They have the money. They're getting ready to move on getting it.
Some of them have been... The river watershed, river restoration had been longer out there, but it's since been released, and we're preparing ourselves to support it and start utilizing that money as well as the Youth Center repairs.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not suggesting that we do this, but I know that in the past, like with other entities, there is an administrative fee, and we are not charging that at this point.
For this one, we are not in the spirit of municipalities and counties working together for the betterment of our citizens. We felt this is best interest to... They've got a need for the entire mountain, and that's what we pretty much have decided the direction that we wanted to go.
I agree. And because it affects areas of the county as well, and so it allows the money to go a little bit further.
Plus, Mr. Chairman, they've done all...
Absolutely. They're doing the RFP. They're responsible, all that, and they'll work with our staff to make sure that everything's done appropriately.
Correct.
They've come so far on their audit. It's pretty awesome, the direction they're going with that.
Just for the commission's information, we do also have the town of Taos as fiscal agent, and they also have waived administrative fees. I think that that shows that if we... I would wholeheartedly say if we did not have the staff that we had in our office, then we would be asking for your assistance and also having that administrative fee be tapped in because we would be in dire need of it. Because of the staff we have, I think we would ask that you guys think we would be...
I think he just said you're due a raise, Renee.
$25,000?
That's what I thought I heard.
Any other discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes. Thank you.
The MOU, not $25,000.
I heard both.
Moving on to 8A, Resolutions and Ordinances, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2016-20, a resolution refusing to accept the donation of land. Mr. Arlen Montoya, our county assessor, I don't see Randy here, but...
Do you want me to present that here?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, there are frequent efforts by property owners to donate land that they view as valueless on the other side of the river, and normally, they just come to the assessor because they get their assessment notices, and they say, "Will you accept it?" And we explain that there's been a longstanding policy of only coming to the commission on these things if there's some value in the land, and these are typically land that the tax bill is $5 a year. In this instance, they didn't come and ask. They just went ahead and filed a deed, and so we want there to be a record in the clerk's office that the land has not been accepted, and it's Carson Estates land, probably. I think the tax bill on it is $5 a year. Is that right? And so, it's not valuable land, and there's been a longstanding policy before I arrived that we didn't want to accept those kinds of donations because of the cost-benefit analysis. So, this is simply a resolution that we can file with the clerk and make clear that we've not accepted that donation.
Mr. Chairman, any liens on it? Any taxes owed on it?
There presumably are taxes owed. I don't know. I haven't checked that.
What about any liens on it?
I don't know the answer to that.
What would happen if there was a lien on it, and we took it on? Would that lien carry to the county where we would have to... Say, for example, there was someone that put a lien on it that was owed $5,000. Would we have to take on that lien?
Sure. And this is not an acceptance of the donation. This is a rejection of the donation.
Oh, it's a rejection?
Rejection. This is rejection to follow a longstanding policy of just not taking those on, and just so we create a proper paper trail so that if somebody does title search, they know that we've not accepted the property.
I misunderstood. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
These are those quarter acre lots that were sold at the 1960 World's Fair.
Almost everybody that calls says my great-grandmother wanted it at the Seattle World's Fair.
I saw him on the place, right?
Yeah. I wonder where that lake is.
Motion to approve. I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Colerole.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes. Item B, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2016-17, a resolution certifying the county maintained road mileage inventory. Mr. Earl Sullivan, thanks for being here this morning.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. We are in need of approval for the resolution certifying the Taos County maintained road mileage inventory, and as we know, it changed a little. We went up from 320 miles to 322 miles. So, we need approval to send in to the state.
Mr. Chairman, where were those changes?
It was on Asante Sevan Road and Tres Lomas Road.
Sanz Sevan Road.
We adopted.
District 64, District 1, Tres Lomas.
District 4, Tres Lomas.
Move to approve. I'll go in second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Just a comment of those 22.94, the most traveled. I didn't need to say that. Clerk Colerole.
District 3 having the most roads.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
Next item is 8C, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution 2016-21, a resolution to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in county jails through the stepping-up initiative. Commissioners, we put this, Quayle put this into our proper resolution form. There was pretty much no additions or deletions from what we saw, and that we agreed upon the items that we're pledging to do are the last part of it, and whereas, I would ask that we just complete this process and start moving into this. And I would like to make the motion to pass this.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Faber.
Yes, thank you very much.
And may I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm hoping that we could soon set up that meeting with the judge, Judge McElroy, as he suggested, and I do have a particular individual in there that has mental issues and alcohol abuse and fits that definition of been in there a long, long time, and I just, at some point, want to let the Commissioners know about this, that I want, I intend to just find out about this individual, find out if there's any way to get him out, and I hope that I can work with the chairman on this when we talk to the judge about this issue. You know, it's a small step, but I've already identified a possible person that may be able to get out. I don't know. Again, we just have to educate ourselves, but...
Commissioner?
Never mind.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, that we need a formal process for a second. And then I was hoping that that could somehow be integrated into our future Department of Health, that we could possibly use some of our indigent funds. We do have a somewhat related issue to address later in the meeting with the job descriptions for that department, but I have some comments about that when we get to it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn. You know, that is where we're headed in this, and I was actually pleased to hear Ms. Phillips talk today that there's services out there that maybe we can, you know, right now, we're trying to get the person in there, but in the meantime, because as Commissioner O'Donnell shows, there's a need right now. So how do we speed this up instead of us just talking about it? How do we start moving on this quick? Maybe the answer is possibly, I didn't know there was a service out there that does this. Maybe we need to look at that for the short term until we can build up something in-house to get it going, but I think the need is now. We need to work on that since now. Okay. Any other Commissioners? Moving on, Item 9A, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Job Descriptions for the Healthcare Specialists and Outreach Specialists. Ms. Weber, HR.
How are you today?
I'm all right, how are you?
We're okay.
Yes, we're here today, myself and Ms. Tammy Hare Mio, to present to you the job descriptions for the Healthcare Assistance Program individual. There's an outreach specialist, which is a pay grade 14. This person would assist with the applications for both indigent within the community and indigent within the detention facility. Do you have any questions on that particular job description?
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the work that Tammy's currently doing, right? This is the work that you're currently doing?
Actually, there's a few things that are added and also a follow-up after an inmate is released. So there is some follow-up language in here as well, so it's more of an administrative clerical support to myself and to the Healthcare Advocate Specialist.
And then, yeah, so both of them include functions that you're doing. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but my impression has been that, you know, you've managed to get your certification for the reentry specialist, so that you are capable of delivering those services to inmates as they are being released, then you can do the work necessary to sign them up for Medicaid, which is, you know, such a critical function. Really appreciate you going through the effort and the work to get yourself certified. I know we're going to be in the process of getting a contract with HSD so that part of your salary can be paid for, but...
Well, currently, just to clarify, the certification I have is not, I'm not certified to enroll inmates, because Taos County does not have a contract with HSD. It can be rolled to it, but even going in there currently and enrolling the inmates for services for the Healthcare Assistance Program, it is very time-consuming. And also, with the Medicaid, it is time-consuming, there is restrictions, there is reports that you have to report to HSD on a daily basis, so it would take an individual to just focus on that. So what we did was we added here on the outreach specialist that they would also do applications for non-inmates or for the public.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that these, both of these sort of blended in, these things that you are already doing. So, you know, there's, you know, and I know you...
I'm spread very thin, I'm just, and, you know, this continues, we're not going to get a good result, I'll just say that. These positions are definitely needed to get a good outcome and stop that revolving door.
Right. And your duties are, you approve people who are eligible for indigent care, right? That's that indigent care coordinator that we've always had, and you do that, and in addition, you're working on identifying indigents within the jails so that we are able to build for their health services from the indigent tax fund?
Correct.
And then finally, in addition to those, if those weren't enough, you're also embarking on this process of making sure, as a reentry specialist, that detainees that come out don't go out without insurance, they go out with Medicare.
Correct.
Medicaid.
Well, Medicaid.
Medicaid, right.
And then also, let's just say that, I mean, and other outreach services that are needed, that they could assist with, within the scope.
And that's what I was thinking, that we were heading in the direction of a case manager then. And that would be somebody along with, you know, a social work degree that would be able to work with inmates. Now, they've already got their insurance thanks to you, but still, they could use some help being transported around sometimes and brought to different appointments and just checked up on. And that the case manager, in addition to working with detainees, might also, if he or she had the time, might also be able to work with frequent flyers in the emergency room and whatnot.
Just to get clarification, Commissioner, our foot cannot pay for transportation, and we, right, at this point, we don't even have a vehicle that would be able to transport the detainees or the releases to these appointments. I mean, that's, that's a goal that we can work on, but at this point, we're not there.
So then, in that case, I hear you, in that case, I just wondered why it's going to take three people to do the job? I mean, I understand that you need help, and I'm all for it, but I couldn't figure out why it would be three people.
The outreach specialist is to do the application process, more of a clerical administrative support staff member. The Healthcare Advocate Specialist is more professional clinical case manager type, where they would have more of a clinician, and where they would have one-on-one, because these individuals do need that, they do need a case manager. So it is, it is different. There may be similarities, but it is night and day.
There's a, I got a chance to look at the Rio Arriba County one for a case manager. You know, there's some good stuff in there. They've been doing it for 15 years, they've got nine case managers, and I thought that that was a pretty good model for the case manager role. And that the ones that we came up with, you know, there's obviously some good stuff in there, but they were just a bit overlapping and it just wasn't, wasn't clear from my reading.
And then a clarification on that, and the funding as well, is Rio Arriba's funding is, some of that's grant, and it is from general fund, so they're able to have that leeway of adding additional duties, but because this fund strictly from the GRT, we have to allocate it for what the purpose is.
Which is for indigent healthcare.
Correct.
So you can have a case manager to work with people who you or assistant have already identified properly coded as being indigent, but you can't drive them around, you can only do what?
At this point, we don't have the resources, Commissioner, to drive individuals around. And, I mean, there needs to be more talk about it, I think it is a good program, but currently, we're not there yet.
Right. So I wondered why we were hiring two more people than instead of just one. Well, you know, case managers, what they end up doing is they end up driving people around. That's a big, big part of what they do. You know, there's also good one-on-one discussions and information that case managers can provide on them, but a lot of it ends up being driving them around too, so.
So...
If we're not ready for it, then we're not ready for it.
Well...
And why don't we just get you in assistance so you're not so overworked?
Commissioner, I think we brought both of these job descriptions, but we won't come back. It's not, I don't think the intent was to hire these two individuals next week or put these out. It was to start the dialogue on creating these positions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
We're talking about the Healthcare Advocate Specialist, correct?
Um, yes.
Both?
Well, this one at a time, but in this case, we are learning that we need a diagnosis right away from someone who is licensed at a certain tier, right? Is this that tier, that they are capable of actual diagnosis? Because that seemed like that is the first place to start. Now, whether our current medical provider does that and does an immediate evaluation, does a coding, I don't know. But we need to, I think, have more discussion on this, in that are we getting, it says DA and public health, well, they probably are, I don't know, qualified to do these kinds of assessments. I want to make sure that we get a proper assessment right away, and if that includes having the diagnosis of a mental illness, I don't know if this job description goes far enough. So that's kind of my concern. Do we want to take that job and have it, that you have to be a licensed social worker capable of making diagnoses, and it's a certain tier? So that's kind of my question here. I don't want to jump into this if we know what, you know, we're trying to figure out what those first steps are in getting people out, getting assessments, getting them out. So I just want to make sure we have the right classification of what we need, and I don't know if just one-year social work is enough, or I don't know if just a case management person, or we actually need someone who has a license that can do the diagnosis.
Chairman, Commissioner, there is, and some of these job descriptions, we did utilize Santa Fe County, I think there was another county that was, to recall what county, was a reentry. So it was out of two counties. And we took a lot of what Santa Fe County had on their reentry. Like I said, there were certain things that we couldn't put in because my department doesn't get general funds for this. So we did put in as much as we could to pay for this individual. The other thing, too, that me and Leandro did talk about is that the contract, the current contract with Correctional Health Partners, there is some areas that they're not providing the service. So looking at that, and I think the contract's up for renegotiation, there's going to be talks there as well on what's needed, but this is, I feel, a step to moving this forward. And with this Healthcare Advocate Specialist would be able to do the referrals when this individual is released. You know, there is Correctional Health Partners, it's a lot of money that's being spent, and I'll say it, some of these services aren't being provided, and this is going to be an additional cost, because if you're looking at a full-blown individual that's going to be able to do the prognosis, diagnosis, you're looking at quite a bit. So I think that's something else that the commission's going to have to think about. You know, where's this money? You know, there's half a million dollars being spent currently. In addition to that, you know, we're going to look at a full-blown, which it's needed, I'm not saying it's not needed, but I think we're going to have to prioritize and see what direction, but I do think that this is a start.
I'm just wondering, could we not just jump right to the qualifications of someone who can do those diagnoses? Or do we need to wait with discussions with our current provider? I'm just trying to, to me, now I hear the step is get a social worker who can do these assessments correctly. Do these qualifications fit that guideline? You know, do we need to change, do we need to take that step and pay a little bit more if we're going to get these people out of jail faster? I don't know. I'm just discussing this.
I'm confused. I thought our provider was doing that currently, because when we did our jail tours recently, I asked that question, how do we make sure in that 30 days when they leave, that they're getting the help that you guys are saying they need? And they said, "Oh, we follow up, we have somebody that makes sure they're making their appointments." That's what I was told. That's what I was told, we were getting out of that half a million dollars we're paying for that service. So we need to take a hard look at that to make sure, but I asked that specific question, and that was the answer I got.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yeah, I think that renegotiating the contract is going to be a big thing, to really identify what they can and cannot do before we consider hiring a staff member. We're going to need to clarify what it is that they can do.
Ms...
And as far as Commissioner O'Donnell's point, it's a critical one. One come heck or high water, one way or another, we're going to need to find a way to assess our inmates so that those who don't belong there are not there. And, you know, Tammy is exactly right, you know, that can be an expensive professional service, and we're not going to be able to hire somebody just to do that. But if we can add on to the contract, or we can subcontract somebody else, it's certainly not a full-time job, but it's a service that we need. And so, I think we may be a little premature in at least one of these. I mean, I hear you, that you need some help, and...
Yeah.
And if, and if one of these is crafted, you know, to specifically help you out so that, you know, you're not so overworked, then maybe we can go with that one, but I'm not sure that we're ready for both of them at this point. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do hear, I think the concerns of Commissioner O'Donnell and Blankenhorn, I would move to table this particular item, but that we maybe have a work-study session so that we can discuss it more, and at a time also when our county manager is present as well.
And I just wanted to say that we're all learning this, and one thing that came out was we need someone to drive these people around. That's what the case managers do, because oftentimes, these people can't get to their appointments, or they, you know, they need their hand held, and if this isn't in the job description, and we don't have the resources, then we need to figure out how we're going to get those resources.
So is that on the form of a second?
I will second that.
Any other discussion? And before, can I ask you to not amend your motion, but I, in the context, before we do another contract across the way here, we have that discussion and we have, you know, and I can call Ms. Walsh at NACO and ask her advice on where we proceed with this.
I'll do that as the primary contact so far, and before we assign somebody, which is going to most likely be in Tammy's shop, and that's what I'm thinking, the outreach specialist position, we can include some stuff on that, would be following up instead of me doing it, but I'll gladly call Ms. Walsh and see and get her recommendation that we can take to that work setting.
I'll amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to include your recommendations.
Okay.
I second that. And I think after our meeting on the 29th with Rui Arriba, we may have a more clear understanding of if we need to add something to this job description or take it out, plus we're going to have a new contract here. I think this is a little premature.
Okay. No further discussion, clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes. Thank you for bringing this to us and getting the discussion and dialogue going. That's all we need.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Keep going. Okay, next item, Item B, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of Job Description for GIS Technician 2 for Planning Department, Ms. Weber.
Mr. Chairman, I'm somewhat confused. I thought we just voted on the healthcare advocate specialist. We were taking that, but we were going to still discuss the outreach specialist.
Was that the intent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I apologize, I took it to be both together. I heard that, that it was both, but then I apologize, Ms. Weber, then we're still on the outreach specialist. Do we need Tammy back? Do we need what? Do we need Tammy back? I think Tammy back.
So very good, as I mentioned earlier, this is a K-grade 14. The starting rate of pay would be 1464. The mid-range for this position is 1781.
Mr. Chairman, we got a great discussion last week with regards to this position and much needed in order to have other departments work efficiently, including 911 and sheriffs and other entities, and so I move that we approve this particular request.
I was, the job description.
I'm confused. Are we on B or on the separate item on A?
GIS, right?
No.
We are on 9A outreach specialist.
Okay. So her presentation was on GIS?
No.
It's, yeah, GIS.
So Ms. Harmeio was presenting.
See, that's why I thought your motion, Commissioner O'Donnell, was to table both.
No.
It was just the first one.
Okay, then now we're on outreach specialist.
Not the outreach specialist.
So the outreach specialist does fall within the indigent healthcare fund. This is an Assistant 2, Ms. Harmeio, and I did state the hourly rate of pay and pay grade. Do you have any questions or concerns on this job description?
And it would be, Mr. Chairman, 40 hours a week?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would so move that we approve the job description for outreach specialist as presented.
I will second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing that, clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes. I apologize, commissioners, for the confusion there. Now, we'll move forward to Item B, which is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of Job Description for GIS Technician 2 for Planning Department, Ms. Weber.
Sorry for jumping into this one.
That's all right. And thank you for being here, Mr. Behill, as well.
This GIS technician position would greatly assist the planning department. As you know, they're working diligently to do our rural addressing. They do work quite a bit, and in conjunction with our E-911 service. The pay grade for this position is a 15. Starting range is 1522, mid-grade is 1850. This position does request an associate's degree or a combination of experience and education.
Mr. Chairman, and the funding is going to come from where?
The funding is budget savings within the planning department. As you know, Mr. Behill took the planning director position, there is vacancy savings from the position that he vacated, and Mr. Behill feels at this time that the GIS technician is the best position to add to his department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, for the opportunity to come before you this morning. We respectfully ask for your approval in the GIS technician position. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, to further add to your question, Ms. Weber is absolutely correct, and by me taking the position of the planning director, we do have some savings within the planning department. Why are we posting this position at this particular pay grade? But we're trying to also have some savings within that funding so that if we are successful in getting a CBO with Mrs. O'Meara as well, and her waiting is only a couple of modules away from getting her certification, we hope to provide additional compensation to her as well. And we also hope to provide some form or additional compensation to Mr. Corner, who will be overseeing this person here in terms of supervisory, but he still will answer to me as the planning director.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on, Item C is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Juvenile Adjudication Fund Grant Application for Fiscal Year 17. Mr. Herb Valdez, DWI Coordinator.
Mr. Herr, commissioners? I come before you to request approval of the juvenile adjudication grant application for fiscal year 2017. As I stated at the last meeting that I was here, we're planning to hire half of the position from this funding to do the teen court part, and then through the grant application, I applied for funding to fund the other half so that they could do prevention to help the teen court prevention specialist with her duties. Like I stated before, we have now gotten on board with the task schools, and we're dealing with a lot of truancy in the task schools, and it's kind of starting to overwhelm that we need to do the job by ourselves, so that's why I've decided to go this way on the juvenile adjudication fund. The amount that we're applying for is $19,365, and the in-kind that we're going to be using is $1,937 from the teen court funding from the grant, so that we don't have to use any kind of funding from outside sources or anything like that. It just comes from the grant portion, and it's allowable by DFA. You guys have any questions?
Motion to approve? I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second, discussion. Clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Keep up the good work as always.
Thank you. Nice, have a good day.
You, too. Thank you. Item D is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Out-of-State Travel for Under Sheriff Steve Miera and Deputy Maro Rosales to attend firearms training in Phoenix, Arizona from April 4th through 6th, as recommended by Sheriff Ogryth.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion?
Second.
And a second.
Clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
The end of department matters. Item E is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Adoption of Doña Ana Road. Mr. Romo Salasag, our Public Works Director, thanks again for hanging out. We should have lumped these two together, but my bad.
That's okay, thank you. Chairman and commissioners, we're here to discuss the matters of Doña Ana Road. I think we've got most of our paperwork done. Maybe Bob could elaborate more on what we found out.
Also, Commissioner O'Donnell here, wanted to brought this to our attention, and we needed to do this, so anytime you need to, go ahead and chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
To refresh the commission's memory, the last time that this was in front of us, we had the road viewers' favorable recommendation. The commission initially said, go ahead and get the survey. When we got the survey, we found that a parcel, part of the parcel, about half of the parcel that we're talking about for Doña Ana Road Drive, ownership could not be determined, and the commission directed us to go ahead and get title search. Floyd Martinez provided that title search last week, and initially, he didn't give a final opinion. He had given it verbally to Earl, I spoke with him, he's since given us a letter. Basically, the ball hasn't moved forward. That parcel is still unclear title. I can go into the weeds on that if anybody has any specific questions, but what my recommendation would be at this time is that if the commission does want to adopt this road, that you go ahead and instruct us to file the appropriate survey and the road viewers' report, and then we have to do that 10 days or more in advance of the commission actually voting on it. The road viewers' process, it was interesting that, I saw Grace here just a moment ago, but it was interesting that Grace talked about the fact that some of our statutes are really ancient, and the road viewers' statute actually goes back to territorial days, and it is an alternative form of eminent domain. It doesn't use the term eminent domain. It existed for 20, 30, 40 years before we ever adopted an eminent domain statute in New Mexico, but by going through this process, we would be obtaining title to that chunk of road. And so, you know, there's always a risk that because of it being an arcane statute, that somebody challenges, I think that's highly unlikely.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. In the past, the county had maintained this road, and then I believe the process stopped when another director came in, and the constituents in that area started to complain that the road was not being maintained, and so they brought it before myself, and that's why I brought it before the commission. I wish there were a map. There was a survey that was prepared that indicated the areas that were questionable. I'm not sure if it was two slithers of land that were on both sides of the road, or if it was of just one side.
If, unfortunately, that didn't get included in your packets, again, the piece of land is not slithers on either side of the road, it's the road plus some additional space on opposite sides of the road, so if you'll picture roughly twice as much as what the road actually occupies. And it runs from the town limit to the private property, there's about half of that is of undetermined ownership.
And it's about, in looking at the survey, I think the total area was about .24 of an acre, a little less than a quarter of it.
It was a small parcel.
It was a small parcel. In the past, what we had done at the county, and I know through Valle de los Rancho's, when an entity needs an easement for a row or a lexor or water, and there isn't anyone that is claiming that land, the county or the town has put into escrow whatever the value of the land was determined to be, and if someone in the future came around saying they disputed the action of the county, then that money would be available for that individual if they approved proper ownership. Is that something that is still done?
Well, under the road viewers' statute, the road viewers can reach either of two basic conclusions. They can conclude that the value to the property owners of having the road adopted outweighs the value of the land, in which case there is no money owed, and that's what I was referring to earlier when I said it's a form of eminent domain. We would have to choose which way to go. My recommendation is because we modeled everything on the road viewer statutes, that we go in that direction, and it doesn't have a provision for putting up money unless the road viewers conclude that the value to the landowners of having the road is less than the value of the land. In this case, because none of their, none of their surveys encompass the road, and the road's already there, I think that the road viewers are going to conclude that the value to the landowners is greater than the loss of their land.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's good to know that we can use this statute and not be stopped because there's some question about title, and appreciate that. Refresh my memory, Earl, the, what sort of improvements are we going to have to make? What's the approximate cost of the improvements to get this road to our standards?
We're going to have to take in approximately six trucks of base of a pit run. What we'd like to do is go in there, grade it, shape it, and then bring in, do the proper drainage, and then go in with some pit run, and then finish it off with some base course. The price of it, I don't got it, I don't remember off the bat in my head, but...
More or less, the length of the road?
It's 300 feet that we're trying to get, yeah. And it's 22 feet wide at the beginning, and then it varies to the 40 feet roundabout that we're trying to make.
And it's a dead-end road?
It's a dead-end road.
How many people, more or less?
I think there was like 25 homes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
In the past, when you've had your two roads, we adopted Trust Lomas and San Esteban, there was a report as to cost to upgrade. If you could be so kind in the future to include this cost, that pay grade.
If I could interject, Commissioner O'Donnell, that would be what will come in front of the commission at the next time. That, in other words, the road viewers' report and the survey will be filed with, the road viewer statute requires that we file it with the clerk, and that that be done 10 days or more in advance of the commission hearing to approve or not approve. This is not the time to approve or not approve, this is to just indicate that we should go forward with filing to go, to move forward. So that, the report that you're referring to will be part of the next hearing.
Get this if we move it on the first meeting in April.
Correct, we can do it by the first meeting in April.
So that's what I would like to see in the motion.
Okay, so you do need a motion today?
Just a motion to move forward with the process, not to adopt it.
No, to set it for that first meeting in April.
So based on the advice of Mr. Malone, I'll move to go forward with the adoption of the road worth of the process of adopting the road.
I'll second. Motion and a second, discussion, hearing that, clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank Commissioner Malone.
Item 10, Budget Matters, Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding the Approval of Budget Adjustment Before the Foster Grandparent Senior Companion Program, Ms. Amanda Ryle, Grant, Accountant.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Afternoon.
Afternoon. The budget adjustment coming before you is a proposed budget adjustment to allocate additional funds for the stipend expense of our volunteers. We have increased their hours recently to utilize their budget, so that's what this budget adjustment is primarily to put additional monies towards the stipends of our volunteers. May I stand for any questions?
Miss Sheriff?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
Next item is Discussion, Consideration and Decision Regarding Approval of Budget Adjustment for EMS Fund, Ms. Ryle.
This budget adjustment is primarily for the EMS fund. It is a budget adjustment to increase other contractual non-capital expenses for EMS.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second, clerk color roll.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman Thacker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryle. Thank you, Ms. Ryle. Tell Lori I'll be able to sign that CVG in just a few minutes.
Sure.
Item 11A, under County Managers' Reported Matters, is a discussion of the Old County Courthouse and the Ag Center projects. We're going to have a future meeting on that, Commissioner. Haddamio, would you like to expand on that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. On March 22nd, we'll be having a work-study session a week from today, and there will be a discussion on the, with Mr. Sanchez, regarding the Old County Courthouse and the Agricultural Center project. The reason we're bringing it up today, too, is there needs to be some decisions made next week by the commission, or direction given to Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Vahill. As he's mentioned to you guys in the past, we need to decide if it's going to be 30-er look, 40-er look. Chippewa is recommending that we go with the 30-er's look, so they would kind of want that as far as putting out the RFP in the scope of work. And also, the recommendation from Chippewa is to tear down the west addition to the building. And I know that's been a little bit of heartburn for the community as well as the county, so we're also looking for that direction, so give that some thought over the next week. That way, we can put that into the scope of work. Mr. Sanchez is going to see if the folks from Chippewa can come down and be present as well as to why they're recommending that. And where staff does not have no recommendations on tearing down that addition, but I don't know if we will have any recommendations by next week, but that's going to be part of the discussion. So we want you guys to give that some thought. And then, Richard will also provide us an update on the Ag Center project, and then using the remainder of legislative appropriations that's set to expire now in June, so he'll have those two projects to present, and then...
That's the $53,000 from...
Yeah, it's a legislative appropriation, yes, for the big building at the Ag Center improvements of...
The snack bar and some electrical and...
And the build-outs for the classrooms and the restrooms that would be next to the snack bar and that addition. Any questions on the Old County Courthouse or the Ag Center projects?
So there's stuff that's been going on, but it's just, it's a lot of stuff, I mean, dealing with Chippewa and all that, you have to understand that it's slower than the speed of government. So this is, this is something, I know there's a lot of talk out there that we're not doing anything on the Old County Courthouse. Believe it me, we're trying, and hopefully we can keep that jump started next week and that on your calendar, it should be that 3/22.
Mr. Chairman, if you have a copy of that letter from Chippewa asking that the west side of the courthouse be, or that addition be demolished, I'd like to see that in advance of the meeting. I don't have, Mr. Chairman, any questions with regards to the Ag Center of the old courthouse at this time, but I did want to make a comment that a few months ago, probably almost a year ago, the light on the northeast side of the parking was knocked down by, I believe, solid waste or waste management. It hasn't been replaced. It's a light that has created a dark entrance to our county complex. I think it's a liability to the county if someone is in an accident there. Tied to that intersection also, we had had some discussions with Mr. Roy Cunningham, and I was wondering what had happened to those discussions as to the, as to that access, whether he was going to need to use that. I know that Mr. Sanchez was going to meet with him and come back to the commission with those discussions.
Why don't we include that also in the second job?
Also, also, great idea, Mr. Chairman. Also, last week when we had our commission meeting, and we left early, was it last week, last Tuesday, most of the lights on the corner of the building were off, including the steps down to the parking lot. And I'm just happy that no one's complained about falling or anything like that, but those need to be addressed as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, I have just a couple of comments about the Ag Center that I wanted to relay. Fair Board is not happy about the voting machine changing their plans, and in defense of putting showers in the Ag Center, the Red Cross has asked for this in the event of emergencies. Also, we're talking about AmeriCorps. If this building were built out, had the showers, they may be able to utilize the space there, providing once we get the lease agreements and if the Ag Center were to agree to housing AmeriCorps. So this is, I just want to put in two cents for the need to keep showers in the design of that Ag Center. I think if we're looking forward to, you know, disasters, or like Monica said, sometimes they get cow poop on them, and they need a little shower, or they fall down and cow poop, or whatever, and they need to go take a shower, and they don't have a shower. So I'm just in defense of, I don't know what the current designs are going to show if the showers have been taken out, but I see the value keeping those showers in there for numerous reasons.
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I'm not sure about the showers being in the design up until last week that you mentioned it. It was the first I'd ever heard of there being showers. I knew of the concession stands, the restrooms. There was going to be three classrooms, and one of the classrooms was going to be given to the clerk's office to store the voting machines, since it's impractical now for the voting machines to be stored at the old armory, that we needed to find a location. And at one point, Mr. Cordova did visit with Ms. Gonzalez on the clerk storing the voting machines there. And Mr. Sanchez, before next Tuesday, will have visited with Ms. Gonzalez on that issue, and I'll ask him about the showers.
Thank you.
And then...
So with that said on the Ag Center and courthouse, we'll move on to item B, update to the commission on various items affecting Taos County by our deputy manager, Mr. Haddamio.
And our, number one, I know Commissioner Omero can't see it, is the light pole in the corner of the parking lot will be fixed over the next few weeks by Phoenix Mechanical. It took a lot of prodding by Mr. Flórez and by Jason Trujillo, who's our risk manager, to get the insurance company to agree to pay for it. So the insurance company will pay Phoenix Mechanical directly, so we're not involved in that process, but Phoenix Mechanical is already on board to do that. And visited with Mr. Flórez yesterday. He said over the next few weeks that that will be done. He'll get us a firm date, and then we can pass that on to the commission. The detention director position closes this week, closes on Friday, I believe, and so far, we've just received a few applicants. Turned in the local government road fund applications on Friday. They were due today, but I had delivered those in, included, and there was Archuleta Road, Santa Stevan Road, Invaldez Road, off the top of my head. Lori Montoya submitted the New Mexico Clean and Beautiful grant that was due this last Friday as well. That's been turned in. Speaking with Ms. Vahill, we plan to release the RFP for the community centers mid-April. We're still waiting on the border plate template contract to be reviewed by DFA. She said the rest of the border plate of the RFP is pretty much complete with, there are other items on her work load. She's thinking that we could get that out at mid-April on the RFP for the community centers. The flooring for Chalisal Community Center will be done over the next few weekends. We are holding a contractor responsible for the flooring, and Mr. Sanchez will be out there with the contractor on Friday, and we'll get that flooring replaced at the contractor's expense, so it won't be on the county. Santa Stevan Road, which was previously mentioned earlier, that became a county road a few months ago, has also been adopted by the school board as a school bus route. Children used to walk approximately half a mile to get, to catch the school bus, so Mr. Salasada worked with the school district, and making that school bus route, so being able to go down to the end of the road, and we built that turnaround space, so those residents will be pretty happy. I don't think they're aware of it right now that it became a school bus route, but for next year, we'll have that in place for them. The state audit rule training will be here in the commission chambers on this Monday, the 21st, at 9:00 a.m., so the state auditor's office will come down and make a presentation to local governments on submitting for the state audit rule training, so you're welcome to attend that as well. That is free. And I stand for any questions?
Commissioner Blankenrohr.
Mr. Chairman, remember, I got a copy of the lease that's being considered by DFA, not to distribute, just so I have some idea of the parameters of where we're going with that.
Is that in your hands, Mr. Malone, or is that in Elsa's hands right now?
I'm not sure whether Elsa has it or not, but I'll get with Commissioner Blankenrohr.
Thank you.
And in relation to that, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Is it appropriate to ask Lori to, like, Paca has a board meeting tomorrow, I can't attend, to kind of give them a heads up of what's coming, or is that again a violation of procurement? I mean, is, can I tell them? You know, here we go again. Just wait, I guess? Do I need to wait? I mean, we did have public information report on square footage value at that workshop. I just wondered.
It's appropriate for Lori, I'm sorry, it would be Elsa to communicate, not Lori. Elsa can delegate that, but I don't think it would be appropriate for the commission to be involved. And it should await the issuance of the RFP. Once the RFP goes out, then it's appropriate for the county to explain the RFP to anybody that's interested in responding.
And will that RFP be just in the paper, or will Elsa contact the county?
I don't know the details.
She'll follow the guidelines that she's been trained to do. There's a set method in the procurement code that require, what requires her to do, and she'll meet that. But remember, we cannot be a part of any solicitation or conversation with any of the potential vendors.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12A, new business to be considered, future commission meeting. We've already set Doniana Drive for the next meeting. Anything else, Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you recall, I believe it was Commissioner Gallegos who at one point said, "Let's bring back the results of the jail inspection and the improvements." Three months from the time it was done, and we're at that three-month threshold, so I'm hoping we do get some kind of a jail reported, things that have been fixed.
Okay, and that might be, we'll ask our interim director, anything you wanted to add to that, Commissioner Gallegos?
No.
The other thing that was on this meeting that we pulled when we recommended Mr. Cordova to go to Santa Fe today, is I had added a executive session regarding the manager's six-month evaluation, and I put another item on there for the attorney as well, because in the past, the attorney and the manager were paired together at the same time, and we missed that window with Steve leaving and setting this six months, so we'll just pair him and Bob together again at the, at the same time, because his was actually due, I think, in October. Isn't automatic, well, it's not, I don't want to call it automatic renewal of his contract, but there has to be a evaluation or exact terminology was review of performance measures for the attorney, and that was to have occurred in October, but since we were going to do a different evaluation period on the manager, it just makes sense that we keep them together, and that way, we don't miss anything. So that will be on the next meeting as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, will we have a checklist or some...
We're working on different, for Mr. Cordova, Bob's is a totally different animal, that's just kind of a discussion, I foresee, on that. The evaluation, I've met with Mr. Haddamio, and we're looking at some different possibilities of something that we're all on the same, you know, it's not each individual's way of evaluating. It would be some kind of a form that we would get from either another agency or something that we feel meets the need, and that we can use for the six-month evaluation period.
Also, Mr. Chairman, are we under commissioned announcements already?
We're about to move that way, and since everything stalled, you're keeping me going there, Commissioner Omero.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say that I met with Stephen Lopez from the New Mexico Department of Transportation last week, and he has basically announced that the money is available now at the state level for the improvements of that intersection between, on State Road 68 and 240, the old post office. The money has been allocated to bring that temporary light setup to a more permanent light setup on that intersection. Along with that, they also want to be able to build sidewalks and better drainage for that area. Mr. Lopez also recommended that the commission have some sort of a letter or resolution of support with regards to this, and I will get further details for it, so that the commission can at a future meeting approve and pass that resolution, approving or recommending or supporting those improvements to that area. They are looking at getting that done within the next couple of years. The money is available, as I said, but they would also like to redesign, as many of you may be aware, there has been some survey that's taken place on that whole area between 518 and the boundaries where Rancho's meets Seattle Camaro. They want to be able to make that whole area there in front of Martinez Bar, Martinez Grill, or restaurant, and San Francisco's Church, along with the Lario Road, and State Road 240 and 518, a little bit safer. And so, I will get the details for that, and I will have staff help me out with a resolution that we can work on for approval by the commission.
And that will include the mandatory traffic emitters that the fire departments and EMS currently use to control the lights. That's the only light that does not have those. It is required by law that they provide that, and they've kept it that way to keep their expenses down. expenses down, but sorry, I have no sympathy for them. That needs to be, it's the only light, it's hard for us to adjust to it as, as you're going through. It's an accident waiting to happen, so make sure those emitters are included in the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other commissioners' announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just have a request in that, on the 29th meeting with Rio Riba County, that we set the room up as a workshop.
Denise has already, we learned about it, we're there on that.
Okay, thank you for doing that, and I do think there may be a big turnout of people attending. I know I'm going to invite our current jail advisement committee members, and I, I think that we may see a lot of mental health people here that are concerned about the issues, so I'm, I'm just guessing we may have a large turnout.
Okay, yes, I've already met with Denise on that, she's got a good idea how to set it up. It is for the three different entities, Town of Taos, Rio Riba, and ourselves, so she's, she's well aware of her task.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to expand on that, the manager's office for Rio Riba County and Yonjo myself, we've already discussed an agenda, there's going to be two additional topics. The first topic will be fire EMS issues, Noahucavente vicinity, since our county fire department responds to accidents in Rio Riba County, so we wanted to discuss that. The second initiative that we're going to talk about is collaboration and economic development initiatives between Rio Riba County and Taos County. Chris Madrid from Rio Riba County will probably be that discussion. We've already met with Chris on that, and so he's working on that. And then after the economic development, we'll segue into the medical and behavioral aspects of the meeting.
And that is, oh, for me, that starts at 10:00?
Correct.
And there is a chance there may be an issue that we may have to handle because of a deadline at 9:00 that morning, so just be aware that we could have a short special meeting, but that's not for sure yet. Just keep that whole morning available for us.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I had asked the manager to, I guess, it would be within the realm of that last item, Mr. Haddamio, the discussion on the opioid and heroin survey that was released at the NACO conference, and possibly working on that together. I believe Senator Martin Heinrich?
Heinrich, yes.
Recently released a press release or something, and I believe most of everyone has seen it, but it's definitely something that we all need to work together and address.
And Commissioner O'Donnell, along those lines, I've been email string with the sheriff and the hospital regarding my request that we keep that an axolom program, get it going. We're right on the, right on the edge. The sheriff has made it a priority, and he's working diligently with the two staff members from the hospital that I spoke, that I started the process 15 months ago, and I think they're finally at the, at the edge, and we're going to see some success real soon on that. Anything else, Commissioner?
Move for...
During now, we go to 13.
Move for German.
Motion?
Second.
And two seconds.
Vice Chair Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Meara?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenrohr?
Yes.
Chairman Fattah?
Yes, thank you all for being here. We'll see you at the next meeting.